Hello.
Did you guys all just log on right now when I started it? You were kind of waiting?
Yeah, this is Don. You hear me?
Yeah.
Okie dokie. I did just get a phone call from Lon.
I can't hear you, Don.
Hello. I made it. It's Kelly.
Hey, yeah. I'll just send the invite to you again. Should be reset now. Yeah, you just click on the invite.
Test one, two.
It's working, Don.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you well.
Okie dokie.
I'm trying to scarf down some food here, so I'm gonna be off mute and camera for a minute. But I'll be listening.
Yeah, I was talking to Kelly, but he said he couldn't hear me because Ron Zlowski called me. He's gonna be a little late. Alright, looks to me like Mobley's at the beach.
I'm at, I'm at Cultus Lake. That's at Cultus Lake.
I see. Is that the backdrop in your office or what?
No, I have, but so you can't see the rest of our spare bedroom slash office that's torn apart and under construction. Mostly.
Well, I kind of decided if I was gonna be locked down, I'd rather be at a safari camp in Africa, but I didn't get there quick enough. Hello, Jerry, how you doing?
I'm doing fine.
Ron called me and he was just pulling in the driveway, asking me if there was a planning commission meeting tonight, and I said, yep. So he said he might be a snitch late.
Never a public one.
Oh, I've been using GoToMeeting for 10 years. It's kind of amazing how all of a sudden something like takes off, you know? It's not like the most novel thing in the world, but then you hear about all the security issues with it.
Yeah, yeah.
A second, I got somebody at the door.
Hi Jeffrey, we have not met.
How's it going? Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure we worked out our bugs earlier in our system.
Well, I like that background. Todd?
Thanks.
Yeah, he's trying to, he's trying to make us all feel jealous. I could throw up some nice Africa picture behind me. I'll do that next time.
I downloaded this app, so I could change it up. See, I could go, I could go to the mountain. Just like that. Or I could even go to Mexico. Oh no, that's not Mexico. That's Mexico.
That's better.
Well, if I send you a picture from Africa with a lion sitting next to me, you can put that up behind you.
Yeah, good. Well, exotic style, the beach, I could go to the beach.
Kelly, do you have a a switch that you flip at seven o'clock, or are we actually public now?
You're public.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
It's, it's recording, correct Greg?
I haven't started the recording just yet. I'll start it at seven o'clock.
Okay, mine says recording already.
Okay, I'll record my own copy, but I'll start at seven, so whichever one gets uploaded, doesn't matter.
We could, we could use that one then for the upload.
I gotta learn how to do these things, these backgrounds.
Oh, just go up there, Jerry, to the Zoom us and go to preferences and add a photo into your background. You're fine. Takes about 30 seconds. I saw Todd doing it, so I figured I'd join in.
Yours is very, very on point there, candid.
I've been remote working for about a month now, so I'm used to playing in the background.
So Jerry, how, how it will work is that, for example, Tim Brunner there that just joined, I promoted him to a panelist. So anybody that needs to share their screen and they log in as an attendee, I'll have to promote them to a panelist. Otherwise, when we get to different points in the meeting where we ask for the applicant to speak or members of the public to speak, basically they have to raise their hands. It's in the script that I sent you. So you'll read all that, and then they raise their hand, and then when you guys are ready for them, I can allow them to speak.
Okay.
Is this Jerry?
I'm here.
Hi. I'm here. Can you see me?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, now I have 15 panelists and one attendee.
Okay, Dave, show me how to make it so that I see all of them at the same time. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, I got it. Yep. I like where Commissioner Mobley is.
I'm at the beach.
That works for me.
I switched out to a external speaker, so let me know if it, if you get feedback or if it's not sounding good. It's just the speaker for me. Things were soft on my laptop speaker.
If I get, I guess one important thing is that if you're not a planning commissioner, if you can just switch yourself to mute for the time being. Just to prevent feedback noise.
Okay.
And I can mute people if we need to, if we're getting too much feedback from somebody that's absent from the desk or something.
That's one way to limit testimony.
Yeah, I can mute and we'll mute people.
Yeah, three minutes, crack.
Does anybody have any questions about anything tonight, any format or procedural questions? It's pretty much pretty much the same. I've got some additional comments that I'm say at a time just to instruct people on how they can give testimony. Other than that, it's regular format.
How do we raise our hand?
How do you raise your hand?
In the bottom right-hand corner.
Oh, I just missed.
There's a little thing down there that says raise hand somewhere.
It's in the part should be in the participants list.
Got it.
You see it down there, Jeffrey? Yeah.
Thank you. I didn't have that sidebar open.
Yeah, so you have to have that sidebar open. I have to have it open the whole time, so I can see if people are raising their hands.
So does it show my hand raised right now?
Do you want me to lower your hand?
Yes, I was just testing it.
I lowered your hand.
I can do it.
Are you raised it again?
I didn't mean to. Not gonna be a perfect system.
I don't think we on the commission need to have to raise our hands when we want to speak, do we Kelly? We can just all be open when we get to discussion?
That's up to you, but yeah, I wouldn't advise having you guys raise your hands.
Okay.
Make more work on my end, and then it will make it just take longer essentially to get to the meeting.
But when we are doing like the applicant presentation and other things, if any commissioner wants to mute your mic, that may help too, just to so we aren't startled when you drop something on the floor or a door slams in your house.
Yeah, they, they talked about this in the first council meeting too that we did on this, so we've done, I think, four or five on this now, including executive sessions, and we haven't had the need to do it, but other cities have actually had to remove people that get on and kind of just like mess with the meetings, so I do have that function as well. I'm not anticipating having to use it, but other cities have had to do that actually.
Huh. I will remind every, I don't know if it's a reminder, but yeah, remind everybody that you are, you're constantly in view of anybody who's attending. And not all attendees are on camera, so some can just choose to be in by audio, but still see us. So any, any motions are usually picked up. And I just, I just speaking from my experience in watching the city council meeting on Zoom, that I was seeing everybody at once, and every time anybody left the screen, walked out of the room, you know, played with your glasses. Kind of like that, it's viewed by everybody.
I notice she didn't say anything about hair chair. I had, I had a technical question. Is the, is the chat log also recorded, or is it just the video and voice?
I don't know. Do you know the answer to that, Greg?
The, when you record the video, the chat log shouldn't be present. However, the chat log, I believe, is public during the meeting, and anyone has the ability to copy from it.
I would advise not using.
Hey Kelly?
Mm-hmm.
I'm talking to Ron Lzowski right now. He's trying to get on and having a few problems. I don't know if Greg can help you or not. He said he's having trouble with two-factor verification on his computer.
Oh, on his email.
Uh, yeah, I can give my hand here. Does he have a cellphone number?
Um, yeah.
Kelly's in here.
Um, I got a great rooster call you on the cellphone. I'll give you a cellphone number, Greg.
Oh, I don't want to give it over the public chat here. I'll, I'll get it from Kelly if he's got it.
I don't, I don't think I have it actually.
Okay. Um, have him, have him give me a call at the Sandy Net line. I can, I can relay it to one of you if you want to get it over to him.
Okay, what, just tell me what the phone number is for that.
Uh, 503 668 2923. And I believe it's option three.
Okay. Ron, call Greg at 503 668 2923. Select option three. All right.
We'll wait a little bit for Ron to see if he makes it in.
Yeah, I kind of thought he was an old IT guy.
Yeah. Well, anymore if you can't bake it or put frosting on it.
I don't know. I had the prime rib at Takeout Friday night. It was really good.
Oh, good.
Well, that we took away was the whole portion was so big, my wife and I decided if we do it again, we're just gonna make one order because one order would have fed both of us. It was such a big, big portion.
Oh, good. I've been there a couple times for lunch.
I'm multitasking. I got my laptop with Zoom, and then on my big screen, I got the got the staff report and stuff like that, so you can look at things.
Yeah, well, I, I don't have it on my big screen, but I've got the
I knew there's, you have more than one computer laying around the house.
Don, that scares me. I have, I have two laptops side by side, because I don't have two monitors at my home office. So I've got two laptops up, and I've got the code book sitting on the desk in front of me.
I've got an iPad, laptop, and the code book.
I have a pretty good setup. I'm at the office.
At the witch office?
Hey Chris, where do you, where do you, where do you, you said you put the background up using properties. Where do you, how do you get to the properties?
Up on the, in your top box, it should say zoom.us. It's got a dropdown box, and you just click on preferences. And when you get to preferences, you'll see something that says virtual background. And there should be a box in there that says none. You'll have to hit the little plus sign, so you can add a photo. Then you can add as many photos as you want. You can change your background as often as you want.
Yeah, I don't see a zoom.us.
Oh, I'm on a Mac, so I don't know what it shows on the Windows.
Yeah.
On mine, you gotta go out to the little Zoom control panel that's open at the same time as the main window space. And there's a settings button in there.
Well, we're just waiting for, to see if Ron gets in.
Yeah, Greg can probably give us an update on how that's going.
You're, okay, yeah, you're at the office.
Yep.
There you go. That, you looked muted on mine, so that answered my question.
I'll give it another minute. Go to 7:05. Does that sound okay, Kelly? Heard you. Okay. Got you.
Sounds good to me.
I don't even have a gavel. I don't know what to do.
We have a rock.
Yeah.
Elbow on the table, Jerry.
I mean, I'm sure Greg will get them on there, but it might take a little bit if he hasn't done the email verification thing in the past.
Yeah. Okay, well, we will go ahead and open up the meeting for the City of Sandy Planning Commission for Monday, April 27, 2020, at 7:05 PM.
There's Ronnie. He's connecting now.
There he is, good. Um, just in time, I will begin before, I've got, I think, I'm trying to figure out where, when I'm supposed to state my comments. I'm gonna go ahead and go with for a roll call, see to log in who's here this, this evening.
Okay.
Here.
Commissioner Lzowski.
Here. You hear me?
McLean Wenzel, yep, I got you.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Mobley.
Here.
Commissioner Mayton.
Here.
And Chairman Crosby.
Here. Okay, well.
So, do you know why I never mind?
Sure, okay. Um, I'll just move to the minutes before my comments I'm supposed to read. We did have minutes from the February meeting. Any comments, additions, corrections, changes? I see a hand there. Your, your mic is live.
Here. I almost noticed one thing. It was on, it says new business applicant testimony, and it said extend the date to February 24, 2020. And I, I think it should have said 2021.
Okay, that would, that would make sense.
That was the only change I saw, sure.
Okay.
I was on, that's on new business under Marion's viewpoint.
Yeah, it was applicant, under the applicant testimony, and it gets to the point where it says extend the tentative plat to, and it's got February 24, 2020. That's the actual day of the meeting. It should say 2021.
Yep.
That's on middle of page two.
Okay, if nothing else, we'll take a motion to approve them as as corrected.
Chair, I'll move to pass the meeting, the meeting minutes from February 24th as corrected.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we actually had two seconds there. I think Commissioner Mobley was in first. I moved in second to approve the minutes of the 24 February 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, everybody?
I abstained. I was gone.
One extension from Commissioner Carlton, who was not at the meeting. Any other nays? Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
Just procedurally, if we do that again, can, can we just do a roll call vote instead of the a's and a's, so it's not as confusing?
I wondered about that. Yes, we will. Thank you. Okay. Public testimony for this hearing, and there are two hearings tonight, but there's also a time just coming up here in a second for public testimony. You'll give opportunity, if you are on Zoom and you want to speak, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time, and then wait to be recognized. And if you are participating by telephone, dial star nine. dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. During the public hearings, the applicant will have 15 minutes for their presentation. And then each audience member that's giving testimony will have three minutes. Those that are in favor, those that are against or neutral. And then following staff recap, the applicant will have five minutes for their rebuttal. And this is the time where we give opportunity for just public comment. If there's anyone present that has a comment they'd like to make to the planning commission that does not relate to anything that's on the agenda tonight, now is your time to speak. So if you're on Zoom, click to raise your hand. Or if you're on phone, star nine. And we will wait a few minutes or moments to see if there's any response.
Jerry, one thing you probably might have noticed, I forwarded my link to Ron. Ron was looking for the link. So on the Zoom, there's two Commissioners Carlton. So for these, the public Commissioner Carlton with the beard is Commissioner Lasowski. The good looking one with the beard, you know?
I can change, I can change his name right now.
No, David, he's got a beard too. He's kind of good looking too, but.
There you go. Now it's Lasowski.
Thank you. I feel, I like the name Carlton. I've been Don La, Long Lost Son for a few minutes.
I don't have anybody raising their hands, Chairman.
Okay. All right, we will move on to public hearing number one. Let's pull it up here. And this is we will open the public hearing at 7:12. This is file 19-046. Modification variance development of Sandy, the Sandy Vault storage major modification. I'll call for any abstentions from any of the planning commissioners. And to respond to some of these, I suppose if you just go like this, so we can recognize you, that may make it quicker too. Any conflicts of interest to declare? Nothing seen. Any exparté contacts? In lieu of any site visits? Go ahead.
I, I'm sorry. I tried to get you at the first run and I was unmuted. I, I do not have any exparté or any contact. I just wanted to make the public aware. I was not on the commission the last time this was heard in, in 19. I joined the month after, but I have since reviewed all of the documents and, and read the decision that was made the last time and have reread and reread the documents to understand what they're asking this time. And I just wanted to make you aware. I, I have gone through and I feel comfortable in, in this decision.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, any challenges to any of the planning commissioners? And again, to bring a challenge, if you're on Zoom, click raise your hand. If you're on a phone, dial star nine. We'll give a couple of seconds. Yeah, assume you didn't see anything, Kelly.
No, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. All right, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request the continuance of the hearing or ask for the record to remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. We'll call for the staff report.
All right, so we're here to look at a major modification to Sandy Vault, and I am now gonna switch to share my screen to show a presentation. So let's hope this works. Host disabled participant screen sharing. So who's the host?
A good question.
Somebody needs to enable my screen sharing.
Yeah, hold on one second. Good trip. Now wait a second. I'm not even seeing it as an option.
Yeah, it's still.
What's that?
I can also close out of it. I could, Kelly, can you share a screen? Because I could close out of it and then have you pull up the PowerPoint, I guess. Although then I can't control it.
Greg, do you know, do you know how to promote that on here? Because I'll need it for other people. Oh, wait, wait, wait. I got it. I figured it out. Okay, you should be able to do it now.
All right, can you see that?
Yep. Yes.
Yep. Again, major modification to the Sandy Vault storage. This has now come before you twice. The first time was for an interpretation and the second time was for their original design review for the storage facility. So just as a reminder, it's located on the west edge of town near the Arco and the Tractor Supply Store. This is in the, the I-1 zone, which is our industrial park zone and that has the same design standards as our C-2 general commercial zone. So just keep that in mind. The request tonight is a major modification to the previously approved storage unit facility design. More specifically, there's, there's three requests, a special variance to increase the percentage of metal siding on all of the buildings. A special variance to reduce the required window percent for two of the buildings, building one and four. And a deviation to reduce the activated frontages on buildings one and four as previously identified and approved by a planning commission during that first interpretation hearing. So in addition, when this was submitted, the applicant had added 34 modular units to the site plan. That actually wouldn't be processed as a major modification. That would be a new separate design review for new structures. But they opted not to, to go that route, so we, we couldn't process it. They also didn't identify what variances or deviations to 1790, what they would have been asking for as part of those units. So we haven't evaluated that as part of this reports and we're just recommending denial of those 34 additional units that, that popped up. And they could act with a separate design review in the future if, if they wanted to, to propose that. So as a reminder, this is kind of a zoom in of the site plan with the buildings labeled there, you know, one, two, three, four. The Arco is just to the north of one. With the last designer view that was brought before you last year, the year before, there was a fifth building over in, where the kind of upper left-hand corner of this. They're not proposing the fifth building anymore. So just these four. So diving in, this is gonna get a little bit, a little bit complicated, but I tried to show a lot of visuals. So looking at percent metal, so again, they're wanting to increase the percent metal. Our code states where metal siding is used, it should be used as an accent only comprising not more than 30% of the surface area of the building elevation. So with the previous application, they requested to feed the 30% on four elevations. And you guys approved special variance to allow 89.7% metal on the south elevation of building two and 100% on the north elevation of building three. And then you approved a type two adjustment to allow 36% metal on the south elevations of buildings four and five, provided that they detail landscape trellises in the two proposed sections of metal siding. So that's just to remind you what was approved last time, what was requested and what proved the last time. And again, building five is no longer being proposed, but that was, it was approved previously like that. So this time they're requesting to increase the percent metal siding on buildings one to four to 80%. That's what their narrative had requested. It actually appears that some of them are higher than 80%. And in fact, I think these numbers may even be a little bit low. I think they're, they're factoring out doors and things like that. It's, it's a little, a little hard to tell, but I think some of the numbers may be higher than 86 or 89 that you see on here. And the four with the checks are the ones that the, the green check marks are the ones that comply with codes, so they're less than 30% metal. The remaining 12 don't comply with the code, so they're, they're more than 30% metal. And so I'll just show, go through this fairly briefly, but I'm just gonna show the previously proposed elevation that was brought before you last year, the year before, and then the current submittal. And then just detail the percent metal. So for the north elevation of building one, on the top is what was previously proposed and there was 0% metal siding. The current submittal is 47% metal siding. Again, I think it's actually possibly higher than that because I think that's somehow factoring in the doors, garage doors and stuff as not being metal or not, they're not actually siding. So the only non-metal siding on this elevation would be to the very far left where the gabled roof is. Everything else would be metal siding. South elevation of building one previously was 0% metal siding. So it was all hardy board or a rock veneer. Current submittal is 63% metal siding. So everything except for the very, very far right, which the very, very far right would mean hardy board. Everything must be metal siding. North elevation of building two goes from zero to 34%. And so this could actually be a processes type two adjustment if that 34% is correct. East elevation of building two going from zero to 24, but the 24% is, I'm just including this one because it's a change from the previous. This is compliant with the code and the 24% is on a portion of the building that's set back substantially from the right of way. Our code doesn't really speak to that, but I'm just pointing that out that it is a change from the previous, but it is compliant. South elevation of building three goes from zero to 39%. East elevation of building three from zero to 86, although again, this one looks to me like it's at 100% other than the foundation. North elevation of building four from zero to 55. South elevation of building four, so this was one that was previously approved by you guys last time at 36% metal. Provided they put the landscape trellises in the two areas circled in green, which is where the metal was proposed. So the areas with windows had hardy board siding in the two areas with the green circles were metal. And so you, you had approved that with the landscape trellises. The current submittal, and we'll get into the window bit later, but it gets rid of two of those sections of window and everything becomes metal. So it's 70% metal. East elevation of building four goes from zero to 89% metal. So, so that's, so those are the metal percent reviews. And I think I am missing one or two elevations in there. I couldn't figure out where they were.
Emily, can you go back one slide for me? This is Commissioner Mayton. When you said 89%, what is not metal on that wall?
Yeah, that's what was confusing. So we think that the numbers might be off. This is, these are the applicant provided to us. To me, it looks like 100%.
Okay.
Or labeled.
Must have said concrete on it, the bottom on concrete or something.
Yeah, the, I mean, it looks like the bottom. I don't know if you guys can see my arrow when I do this, but looks like this maybe is a concrete foundation. And then this top part might be something else, although I would imagine it's probably metal still, like a down, a gutter, downspout or something. So I'm not sure. These are the numbers that were provided. So again, that was, I think, I think some of these numbers should, would actually be higher than what is being provided. And hopefully they can kind of clear that up.
Thank you.
But essentially, all but those four elevations are, they're asking for a variance, or I think one of them could be a type two potentially adjustment to increase the metal above the 30% and, and not really using it as an accent, but rather using it as the siding. So we'll need, we'll need kind, we'll need a decision on all of the elevations as to whether you want to deny the request, approve it, or deny some and approve some, or, or however you want to break down. And we can come back and, and look at these. But you should have them in your packets as well. So for.
Those are comparisons are really good, Emily. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. That's how I had to kind of wrap my head around it. So I thought it'd be helpful to see them side by side. So previously, they had requested to provide less than the required percent of windows on the elevations listed here. You guys had approved that lower percent of windows on the north elevation of building one, the east elevation of building two, and the south elevations of building four and five, again, provided that they have metal awnings above the windows and the landscape trellises. So kind of adding on to that landscape trellis condition with having additional metal awnings above the windows. And then you denied a special variance on east elevation of five and the west elevations of buildings three and four and required them to add an additional window on the east elevation of building five and the west elevations of building three and four to meet the 30% window coverage requirement. So that was the previous application and the previous decisions. Let's kind of go over those. The current request is to further reduce the required window percents on buildings one and four. So building one would go down to 7.3% and building four, the south elevation of building four, go down to 7.2%. So again, here in north elevation of building one, the previous middle on the top shows the window calculations. It was previously submitted at 13% windows. The code requirement's 20. And this, this was approved. They're now coming back and asking to reduce it even further to 7.3% windows. And again, the code requirement would be 20. South elevation of building four, they had previously proposed 20% windows. The code requirement is 30%. And you had approved it, provided they have the metal awnings, which I kind of tried to draw in there in red, and then the landscape trellises, which I drew in green. So that was, that was the condition of approving that request previously. They now are coming back and requesting 7.2% windows on that elevation. And again, the code requirement would be 30. They didn't actually request this, but they kind of resubmitted some elevations for the west elevations of building three and four. This is showing three. So the previous middle on the top was 23% windows. This was one you had denied and required them to add another window and bring it up to 30% window coverage. These would be visible from industrial way. And they, when they resubmitted at this time, they said it's actually 40% windows now because the grade changed around where building three would be. But the way that, the, the way it should be measured is 12 feet above ground. So if the ground slanted, I believe that it would be 12 feet above the slanted part of the ground as well. So I don't think that 40% is correct. I don't know what the correct number is, but as it stands, the previous approval was to add an additional window and bring it up to 30%. So that's, that's something that will have to be decided again tonight if you want to change your, your decision on that or just keep the same decision. West elevation building four is a similar situation. It doesn't have the slant though. So percent windows changed slightly from what they had submitted before, 23, 22. percent windows changed slightly from what they had submitted before, twenty-three, twenty-two point five. I think it's probably just a rounding thing and it's just the same proposal. But again, you had required them to add an additional window and make it up to the thirty percent. And then the last piece is activated frontage. So in the original, original application, which was an interpretation, you had determined that the north elevation of building one and the south elevation of building four are activated frontages, among other frontages, but these are the two that they're requesting that you reinterpret. And so they're, they're asking that you reinterpret the activated frontage so that it's only a small portion of the north, the north elevation building one and a small portion of the south elevation of building four. So the north elevation of building one, the top is the submittal with the last design review application with that whole facade being considered activated, which really just means having a primary entrance and meeting the window requirement. The bottom shows the current submittal, the, the top one is the elevation of the bottom to the top is the elevation and the bottom is the window percent calculation that shows what they're proposing as the activated facade. So just that area that I circled in red. That they're just wanting that portion to be treated as the activated frontage and not the entire north, north elevation. And then for the south elevation, building four, similar, so the top is the, the, what they had previously submitted with the previous application. And then the current submittal is asking to only consider the activated frontage within that red circled area. So far to the left there. So just to kind of summarize, so we're recommending denial of the request for the thirty-four modular units since they didn't come through a, a design review request. We're asking tonight to review the previously approved elevations and the conditions that you had issued as part of approval and compare them to what's being asked for tonight and determine if you want to approve any more increases in the use of metal siding on any of the elevations or any decreases in the percent of windows on the north elevation of building one or the south elevation of building four. And then also determine if you want to change your previous interpretation regarding what the activated frontage is. So it's kind of a lot. If we want to look at any of the elevations again, we can, but that concludes the slideshow.
I think, Emily, do you have a, do you have available to pop up? Just a site map so that everybody can be clear on where buildings one, two, three, and four are and then how they sit in relation to what people could see, which is why we made the decisions in the beginning.
Yeah.
It's on page fifty-seven of the report. I got that, I have that pulled up too. Emily, when you get done, if you could pull up the explosion of unit four, that's the one that faces industrial way. I'd like to see the, the current versus previous revision of it again.
Okay. Yeah. So these are the buildings again, just kind of go over, can you see my arrow when I move it like this? This, so this north elevation, building one is one of the ones that would now have and they're, all of them will have a lot more metal. This would have way fewer windows in this portion. And they're asking that this portion not be considered as part of the activated portion. And then for building four, I believe it's this portion that would not be activated and only, only over here would be the activated portion. And then so that, so that these sites are the ones where we, you had required before an extra window and require them to meet the thirty percent for windows. These would be visible from industrial way. This will punch through eventually. So these would be visible from there. And then to look at the elevations of building four. So this is the south elevation and building four, that would be kind of a long industrial way. And again, the top is what was previously approved with the landscape trellises. Metal just in these sections here and here, and then, you know, the windows, and this is what's being proposed now.
Could you go ahead and throw the site map up again just for a second? Yeah, just to kind of make sure people remember with the north elevation of three and the south elevation of two, we determined were really, weren't visible up in the public. And or the three faces the rock wall that tractor supply store and south of two faces vegetation. That's why we said it was okay to almost make those a hundred percent metal. Otherwise, stuff was visible.
Right.
And when the north of one is, is just north of that's the Arco Station.
Yeah, the Arco Station's up here.
The, the Champion Way end caps of one and two are both visible from Champion, are they not?
They are.
And then, and then the
Yes.
And then that facing of four is, is visible from industrial way.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, industrial way plus that side road that goes into the back end of tractor supply that will also eventually access another piece of that property.
This access road here.
Yeah, that's all built.
Okay. Any other questions for Emily? Thank you.
Could you show the, can you show the one and two recap the ends again, just real quick? I'm sorry.
The which?
Buildings one and two, the end, the Champion Way view of, of one and two.
The original and the new proposed?
Yes, please.
One, I don't think they're proposing, so they think they're meeting, I don't think they're proposing metal on one. So I don't have it in here on two. It's just this area which is setback. And it actually meets the code for metal.
Okay, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought I had in my notes. I just want to make sure I was right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Emily, one other quick thing on the, could you bring up the north elevation of one? When I was reading our recommendation, they showed originally a submittal with wood truss awnings, you know, over all of those entrances. And the one down below, their, their currents just got a smaller awning. And I, and I, if I just, if we look at the words of what we approved, I think we said those smaller awnings were okay, that, is that correct?
I don't know. I, I'm not, I can't remember what you had previously approved.
Well, I'm just looking on, on your
This elevation. So I imagine that, I mean, the approval of this entire elevation, I think would have included all of these gabled roofs.
That, that was my memory of it.
If you look at the, on your very first page, you summarize what our, our conditions were in D dog. Talks about applicant having metal awnings above the proposed windows. So I didn't know if, if I just wanted to make sure we understood if there's any issue.
I think that was a part of the condition for approval of the metal siding and a reduction in windows on the south elevations of buildings four and five.
Okay, so what didn't apply to one?
No, I think it was just four and five. That's my memory of it. What I reviewed.
Commissioner Carlton, what I, what I read from that, and again, I wasn't there, I did not watch it though. I, I thought it was just referencing the awnings over the windows, not over the windows and doors. I might, I might be interpreting that incorrectly.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the applicant's fifteen minute presentation.
Oh, here we go, stop share.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. And can I share the screen?
Hey, you should be able to. I allowed all panelists to be able to share their screen. You gotta click the green screen share button.
Jerry, do we need, do we need to have the person to introduce themselves?
Yeah, I will do that. Thank you. Can you, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Yeah, so my name is Tim Brunner. I own Access Design Group in Gresham, Oregon. And many of you I remember from before, so thank you for having us back again.
Can you give us your street address?
Yes, sir. Yep. It's a fifty-two Northwest Second in Gresham, Oregon, nine seven oh three oh.
Thank you.
Yep. And so thank you for having us back again. And thank you to Emily for her wonderful analysis here and keeping us straight and keeping everybody straight through this kind of challenging time. So I really appreciate that, Emily. And also Kelly's been a big, big help here as well. So thank you for that. What I'm going to try to do here is I'm going to work through some visual aids that I have brought or that I'm going to show you and talk about some of our requests here. So you guys are now, after that introduction from Emily, pretty attuned to the site, but I just wanted to bring up a few things to be clear on here. So for all designated purposes, you know, this is building one and building two. And they have rather small facades that in a sense activate Champion Way. And they're a linear building. It's a very oddly shaped site and a very challenging site with grades with this greenway space that comes through here and then this huge retaining wall that comes along here. So it's a very long, narrow site. It's a challenging one, as you guys are familiar with. One thing that we are advocating about today is that which facades actually address the street and really affect the public realm. And when we look at that and we look at the sides of the streets that actually, or the sides of the buildings that actually affect the public realm, we're really looking at how does the building affect the pedestrian route along Champion Way and along industrial way? So I just want to kind of set the tone with that. I, I wanted to explain kind of why we're back here tonight. And, and it really comes down to a couple of things. After our last land use hearing, there were several variances and special requests that we were able to get and accomplish. And at that time, the economy was booming like crazy. And it took us many months in order to put together construction costs for the project. And if we found out through that, through some competitive bidding, that our project just was not bankable. Mark Benson, the property owner for this site, has met with several bankers. And we really had to find a way to make this perform financially for the site. So we were tasked to go back to the drawing boards to try to get the scope of the project to a point that would be financeable. So, you know, this is a, a storage building, right? These are storage units which are allowed in this zone outright. So we're not asking for anything special with regards to the use. But we found quite a few challenges with the facades on this site. And so we really wanted to come back to you tonight to try to explain our position to try to make these buildings simplified and also not be a detriment to the public realm. The next view I'm going to show you is of the actual facade facing a building one and building two, as well as the civic space that we'll note. And this picture here really shows along the sidewalk what you'll see when you approach the building. And this is the main office building. It's the main part that people will come in contact with. And therefore we really feel it's kind of the main, should be the main focus of this development. We're still wanting to maintain the windows and the awnings and the hardy panel siding on this facade, as well as that gabled entryway right here to really kind of highlight that. We're also showing in these facades, the landscaping that's going to be coming in here with the street trees, the terracing of the landscaping as it comes down the hill. And then you'll see here where building two is and how that facade is activated. Emily did a great job at kind of comparing these facades. And so I don't want to be redundant in that. And we can come back to it because I'm sure you'll have questions. This was the previously approved facades of building one and two, three and four, and then these are the actual proposed. Now, keep in mind with, with our proposal, we really believe that the east elevation of building one is the primary elevation that is seen from and really activates the experience when you're walking by Champion Way. And we're really trying to show that we're doing that with a lot of building articulation and with materials. What we're also trying to do is make the building more cost effective and financeable with the, so that we can get our loans and what's needed to build the project. So we've had to simplify some things. We really honestly feel that the north elevation of the building that goes from about this point, the rest of the way is really fronting private property. It's not a public street. It's a public or a private access to the gas station as well as a back way into the tractor supply. So we were really opting to try to simplify that elevation, but yet still keep elements of window, door and awning where those occur. On the other side of the building, which would be the south elevation, this is a tall building. It has two stories. And again, we were trying to keep the part of the building that's closest to Champion Way, having the hardy panel and a little change in elevation, but then allow the rest of the building to be what it is with the metal siding. I want to point out the metal siding that we want to use on this building is a, is a high quality material. It's a, it looks like it has a, it's a baked on kynar finish. And it has a longevity and it's actually will last longer than the siding will and keep its true color. So we're not proposing to use a cheap or inexpensive pole building or metal building type of, of siding. We want to use a high quality material for this. We're also keeping with the flavor of where the doorways are to get into the building, that they would have articulation with awnings over them. On the next building, this is building two. Again, this is Champion Way and how that is activated. And as it turns the corner, this is the facade that faces the creek area and that wetland area. So we are turning the corner and adding that nice material, but the rest of the building being able to be that high quality metal siding. On the north elevation, we're wrapping that corner back, the forty feet or so with the hardy panel with a cover over the, an awning over the door. But then as it moves back into the site, it, that is going to the metal siding. Now let's remember where this is. This is back in this area that I'm talking about. Okay, so it's, it's pretty far back. The buildings are relatively close together. So we're trying to activate this end of this building and we're trying to activate this end of this building. Sorry for the clunkiness. I hope you guys can see this okay. We're all in awkward times right now. This is building three, which sits back quite a ways in the back of the property, just below the tall retaining wall from Tractor Supply. This facade here is what was determined actually could be seen at some point from Champion, or from Industrial Way, and it sits back here. So hopefully, everybody can understand that. So it's back here. It sits back from Industrial Way on that facade there. There, Emily was correct. There was some grading changes that have happened here. So actually, our percentage, Emily, is probably higher than what we're showing because there's less facade. Therefore, the percentage of windows, we're showing the added window that was asked for before, as well as the awning above those windows with that hardy panel siding along that. This is the north elevation, which really faces Tractor Supply. And move this down here. Sorry. And here's the elevation. It wraps the corner that would be facing south. Again, this is all hardy panel. It has the nice awnings over the windows and doors with the base material. But then, as you move back from this point and get interior to the site, we're proposing to keep that metal siding, although keeping articulation over the doors where the awnings are located. This is building four. This is the, one of the changes we are asking for is articulating the corner where the entrance to the site is. This is the facade that faces towards Industrial Way. And really trying to build the corner up of those buildings with the nice materials of hardy panel siding and awnings over the windows with this base material. And then having the high quality horizontal metal siding across the rest of this. And what I want to point out for, for you on that is, at our last land use hearing, we did make mention of this greenway. And this is a very highly, high foliage, pretty dense landscaped area. And our plan is to extend that wetland area onto our site, which is what we talked about last time as well, which would cover a fair amount of this building as it grows up. So we were wanting to really focus our energy, our money, and focus on this corner of the building that in, that affects Industrial Way and how you enter the site. This is a view that was pretty effective at our last hearing, but we've updated it here so that you can kind of see it's some context. This is the Tractor Supply Building, and this is a newer building. They built their little barn building on the back of the site, which kind of towers over that retaining wall. And as you can see, our buildings three and four kind of fall down the hill there. It's really hard to not talk with my hands in front of you, so sorry. And then here is building one, and it really shows an activated facade here in this nice plaza area and parking area, which is really kind of the main entrance to the site. Building two, it really shows, I can probably zoom in here a little better for you, shows how this corner here is activated as well. So we're really trying to create that articulation here along Champion Way, but then not do that when we get back into the site, again, still using high quality metal siding, but try, and the awnings over the doors, but trying to simplify it. Again, this is all in the, in the nature of trying to make this project feasible to construct. This was a site, a section that we had shown before as well, which is pretty graphic in showing how, from Highway 26 even, how this site really is going to sit down in a hole. We're building three and four. Our building one and two aren't quite as low, although they are quite a few feet lower than, than the roadway here, and which is much lower than Highway 26. I guess what I'm trying to point out is that we're really wanting and believe that emphasizing these facades is what's really critical in making sure that the public realm, which is really Champion Way and down here Industrial Way, are really emphasized, allowing us to build the rest of the building in a more conventional way, which helps the project become more feasible. The next view I'm going to show you is images from, that really show again that public realm. And at the site level, this is it in the winter time, or in the summertime, I should say, when there's complete foliage. And what this isn't really showing are all the new street trees and landscaping that's also required and in front of the building. So if you can have a little imagination, the drawing above shows street trees and landscaping in front of the building, which will be done and required. It really starts to make it a pleasant experience for people that are walking down the street. It also softens and actually, in many ways, covers the buildings up. This is a view in the wintertime that we took, which also shows it a fair amount of foliage. It's a little more transparent in the winter, but it still does have quite a bit of cover. I'm not going to, because of time, bore you with these. We can come back to them if you have questions. I did want to emphasize this building, which I thought was interesting, that got constructed, which really is a prominent building facing Industrial Way, which is really void of any sort of articulation at all. This is actually a view from the sidewalk, and it really gives you a sense of how that building kind of looms over our site. And I want to contrast that with some other views that show where that building is in relationship to ours. You can see how it steps down. And this is our view of our building. And that building that sits up there on that pedestal kind of looming over our site with no articulation whatsoever. So we're really trying to make sure that you, that we have a nice view for people that are walking down Industrial Way. I do want to point out, though, from this view, which is where you drive onto the site, that you really can't see, you can only see about the first or the back half of building three. So that's going to have windows in it, which are back here. They're just hidden by building four. I think that's kind of important to note. This is reminding us of how beautiful that building's going to look in the, in the front. And then I wanted to go to this last view here. And what's important about this that I just wanted to emphasize is where this wetland area is and how we're creating a wetland buffer area in front of building four, which is going to be highly landscaped, very dense, which is going to cover a lot of the windows that you were requiring us to do last time. Hence, the reason why we are really wanting to try to activate only the entrance to the site on building four, which looks like this. This is a view, just, just for context, we're not out on the site right now, but you get kind of a sense of Industrial Way, which does dead end on our site. I know there's a lot of hopes and dreams that someday that'll get extended through and actually become a pedestrian route. It is not a pedestrian route right now. Someday, it probably maybe will be, but we've yet to see that happen at this point. But right now, pedestrians are going to have quite a wonderful experience in front of our buildings compared to what they have on adjacent properties where there's large retaining walls, trash enclosures, things like that. Where, whereas we're really trying to make it look really nice and active and green. So I'm gonna, I'm going to end it there. Emily went through a lot of the technical parts of it. It's very technical. I think right now, and really what I'm trying to portray here to you is really it's, the technical is, is important to cross Ts and dot Is, but really what it's about is what does it feel like to you? What does it feel like to a pedestrian walking down Champion Way? What does it feel like? It's really a feeling issue and an appearance issue. And what we're trying to show you is that we really are trying to strive to meet the Sandy-style requirements along Champion Way and along Industrial Way, and really trying to allow the rest of the building to be what it is, which is a storage building. And I want to, I want to emphasize the importance, though, of that because this is going to be a building that's going to benefit our community by people that will use this for their belongings. But it's also, the desire is to be a place where people can, there's been a need for skiers and travelers to be able to store equipment here. And that was the reason why we kind of added on these for future use, these pre manufactured storage units, because we found a need for like locker type storage for skis and boots and snowboards and that sort of thing. And we're, we're putting that out here for you guys to consider because this brings tourism to our site or to our city. It brings people that are going to shop here, use our restaurants. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to be a destination city. And I think that Mark has done a fair amount of research to determine that there is a need for this. And so that's why we had proposed this on our, on our plan. With that, Kelly, I'm not sure how this works, but I know that Mark and his wife wanted to just say a couple of words. I'm not sure how to do that.
As a point of order, it's now up to the chairman. He gave you 15 minutes. It was about 21 minutes. So Chairman Crosby to decide if he wants to give the applicant additional time at this point, or if he just wants the applicant's additional time to be in rebuttal.
Good question. I'll, I'll rely on some of my other, my fellow commissioners. What are your thoughts quickly?
I don't think it, it matters. If it's quick, but not if it's another 10 or 15 minutes, then it should go into rebuttal.
I would definitely say make it quick.
Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, we've got, we've got more tonight. So I will, I will let you have a couple of minutes for, you say, Mark?
I do have a question, Chair, for, for Tim, if I may. Just, just I missed it on one of your slides. On the corner of building four, where you're proposing the wraparound, can you tell me how, how far the, how far the cutback is? How far, how far is that proposed? Is that 40 feet? Is it 60 feet, 20 feet? I can't really tell from the drawing.
How far back right here would we come on?
The finished, the finished end, correct?
Yeah, it's about, it's about 40 feet.
40 feet? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, we'll give Mark a couple of minutes.
Time is all turn on him to talk.
Mark, Mark just texted me and said that he can just wait for the rebuttal. That would be fine. Or during the Q and A, just for time's sake.
I did have one question. I don't know if you have it. Do you have anything, any pictures of this metal siding?
It's in the staff report.
It is in the staff report. I didn't want to be redundant with that. Is that something Emily could bring up?
It's on page 127 of the staff report. If you want to quickly bring it up and Emily share her screen.
Normally, you know, we'd have a big sample to show you, but we can't do that.
Well, you hung, you got one here. You kind of leaned it up against the wall.
Yeah, we tried.
It's exhibit H. As in hockey puck.
Yeah, Tim, can you turn off your screen?
And it's in color.
Oh, do I, you want me to stop sharing?
Yeah.
Okay. There we go.
I don't know if anybody can share that.
I could try.
If you have it in front of you on the computer, you can share it. Oh, there we go.
Can you, can you see that? Yeah, so it is an actual like sample that they brought into the office, which obviously we, we don't have because we're not in the office. Oh, actually, Kelly, you could probably grab it. But it's, it's, yeah, it's like a corrugated metal siding. It's what you typically see.
But it would be horizontal.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this one shows, is a couple of questions. That is like, it looks like a beige. Is that gear kind of intent as far as color?
Yeah.
So, and I guess this may sound redundant, but, but this matches the color power or color palette, which is technical with Kelly, but.
Yeah, the color of the siding will match the palette that we've submitted.
Okay. We will move on to public testimony. Guidelines for those who wish to speak, please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It's acceptable to state if you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. And if you have any documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. And to do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to planning, P L A N N I N G at C I dot sandy dot O R S O R dot U S. And then staff will make sure that your materials are properly taken care of. And if you don't wish to speak, but you do have materials you want to submit, you would also send them to that same address of planning@ci.sandy.org.us. And also as a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal first, then testimony opposed to the proposal, and finally, anybody with neutral testimony. And as, as, as has already been mentioned, we'll have you, we require or ask that you state your name and your address when you begin. And as a reminder, if you're in Zoom and maybe have joined since we started, and you want to speak, you click the raise your hand button at the appropriate time and then wait to be recognized. If you're on the telephone, simply dial star nine. That will raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. So we will move to testimony. If you are in favor of this proposal, remember to state your name and address for the record. So, and you'd have three minutes if you, if you speak. So click your raise your hand or dial star nine if you are in favor. And we'll wait a few moments.
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. It's one disadvantage of this platform is we don't have a camera going the other way. Okay, then if you are against the proposal, you're not in favor of it, now would be the time to raise your hand or dial star nine.
I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, if neutral, you really are neither for it or against it. You just have some comments that you'd like to make about the proposal. Now would be the time to raise your hand or dial star nine.
Again, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Emily, we'll turn it back to you for recap and recommendation.
All right. I don't have much for recap, but I was going to show the, the metal siding that they had brought in as exhibit H, but we all already have looked at that and just reiterate, you know, the, the code is pretty clear that only wants metal as an accent and not to exceed 30%. So just something to keep in mind. That's what the code is asking for. That's what it wants to see. That's not tied to whether it's on a public right of way or not. That's just the exterior building material and what it says about that. Activated frontages are also not tied to public. Um, activated frontages are also not tied to public right of way, um, which does seem strange, but they aren't. And so just another thing to, to kind of keep in mind of based on what you guys had decided before were the activated frontages and whether you wanted to change your minds on that. That's, that's really all that I have.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the only thing I had to add, I just have one thing, is the additional storage units that Emily said we can review. Um, I would still recommend denial of that. Independent of any other decisions or any other feelings that are out there. We, we don't even know how they meet or don't meet our code. Um, also where they're being proposed to be located outside even the design is that if there's a vehicle loading or unloading in that area, they would actually be blocking the easement that Tractor Supply has on this property. Um, and we don't have anything confirming from Tractor Supply that they would be relinquishing easement, uh, for the use of that area's storage units. So I, I think if we approved it, we would actually have trouble, um, in regard to legally approving something with potentially blocking an easement right of another property owner. And that's all I had.
Uh, just a question with that, um, Kelly is by us denying it at this point, does not preclude them from coming back with a proposal for that area with those at a later time, does it? Or is, since we're not looking at design review?
They'd have to wait a year, I believe.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what the code says. David, can you, can you chime in on that? I think that's what the code reads.
I mean, they didn't technically apply for it this year though, so I don't know if that makes a difference.
I can take a look at it, uh, here in a second, but that was gonna be my initial gut reaction was, um, you know, technically they really haven't applied for it. Uh, and so I think that, um, you know, clearly, um, uh, and I wanna also make sure that the code speaks to all applications. Uh, but let me take a look at that, but my gut was telling me that since it hasn't officially been applied for, uh, that may not hold here. But I'll look and I can, I can update.
Thank you. Okay, Tim, we'll give you opportunity for five minutes rebuttal or Mark, if he wants to speak.
Um, thank you. Hopefully you haven't started the timer yet. We're having logistics here. Um, Mark should be able to hear me talking right now. I think he should probably get on first. Does he need to raise a hand, Kelly, or?
Hold on, I allowed him to speak. Okay, I think he should.
They can hear us all right?
Yeah, we can hear you, Mark.
Okay, guys. So thanks for your time tonight. As you know, we put a lot of energy into this. We're using one thing I think it's really important we, that we pay attention to, that we're using all Eastside people. So there's a lot of contractors that are gonna be employed on this project. And we think that, uh, going with the metal and some of the other changes are gonna make the project bankable. It's not Mark Benson. It's not bankable. This project needs to be feasible so we can pull it together. That's what we're asking for. And we're using local lenders as well. So that's why we're asking for these adjustments.
Mark, for the record, can you give your address?
You bet, you bet. Uh, my address is 655 Moani Ala Street, M O A N I A L A, Moani Ala Street, Honolulu, Hawaii, 96824. And also to let everybody know, you know, we sold the gas station Sanford and I recently. The Sandy Style was a significant contributor for frankly going over costs on it. And the station never made a profit. So, you know, we, we sold it and we're not trying to build anything that is gonna damage the community. We wanna add to the community. And frankly, we'll probably pay $125,000 a year in taxes if we get this thing built the way we're trying to get it built. But we have to have something that'll at least break even. Okay?
And then can I share? Thanks, Mark. Can I share my screen again?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay, there we go. Um, you know, Emily made a really good point in her kinda last few comments about, uh, what the code states as, you know, I guess in a sense contributing, um, and, uh, public realm. And it's very odd, as she pointed out, that the code really doesn't differentiate, um, between the public realm and private. Um, it kinda dictates, um, a lot about what happens on the private side, um, as well. And what we're trying to do here is really, um, try to, uh, enhance the Sandy Style on elevations of the buildings that directly contribute to the public right of way. Um, that is our goal. That's our intent. So we're trying to focus, uh, that money and investment, um, yeah, on those facades, a long Champion Way and a long industrial way. So I just really wanna point that out. You have the authority as planning commission to say, well, yeah, that does kinda make sense. Um, versus dictating what's happening farther back in the, on, on the property. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, um, of just what our goal, what our intention is, uh, by coming to you again, um, was to really focus those resources towards the public right of ways. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I can do a, a quick little poll of the commissioners. You, uh, think we should keep the, keep the hearing open so we can, um, talk to Tim if necessary? Or close it?
I think that's a good idea to keep it open.
Okay.
I second that.
All right. So I think you were, you were, you were in on it before, Tim, that we, we will keep it open, but only for the purpose of being able to ask you a question, uh, for a brief answer, so that we don't have to open and reopen and all that. All right, we'll go to our discussion with no further ado.
Should we tackle a building by building?
Well, you, you can. I got a few general comments that might maybe throw out or ask if people have maybe some more general comments.
Yeah, let's start with, that's a good idea. Let's start with any general broad ideas. And then, yeah, we almost have to do it building by building.
I, I think it's important, um, that if you have the staff report in front of you, um, when it comes to these things, you know, there's criteria in the code that we are bound to go by when we make our decision. You know, and it's not emotion, it's not money, it's whatever, it's the code. And Emily has, has done a good job of in the middle of page eight, uh, putting in code 17 dot 66, adjustments and variances. And she's kind of explained that, you know, if we grant a adjustment or a variance, we gotta give a reason. And the reason has to be based upon what's in 1766. So I wanna make sure people keep that in mind. I mean, I'm always looking for that one here, a presentation from an applicant.
Why haven't they changed it?
What's that?
Mark, you might wanna mute yourself.
That's why I wanted you to raise it.
Anyway, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're focusing on that because I, I'll be honest, I didn't hear 1766 addressed much. I heard cost addressed. Um, I heard, um, what people can see, um, you know, et cetera. So, uh, we, if we do give a, a variance or an adjustment, we have to give a reason for it. The reason is based on 1766. So I'm just encouraging the commissioners to be sure you look, you're looking at that. Because when you, when you may, if you say you wanted to do something like we, we did, like when we did this before, this third time we've seen this. You know, we took the north side of Building Three and the south side of Building Two and said, you can make them all metal. Nobody can see it. So, you know, yeah, it makes the intent of the code. But the north side of Building One, uh, all due respect, it was kinda indicated as kinda back door into Tractor Supply. I would suggest it's the main entrance into Tractor Supply. That's how you get to the front parking lot. So you're, that meaning that's quite visible, um, you know, from the public as opposed to back in the site. So, anyway.
Anybody else with general?
I, I would. Yeah, I would just second, uh, what he was just saying, that we spent a lot of time on this the last time and we made a lot of variances. And now they're like more than, some of those variances are proposed to more than double again. Um, and I guess I really was looking for more of the rationale other than, um, to make it bankable. Um, so I mean, some, some projects just aren't bankable within the codes of the city. So that's what I'm looking for.
You know, I think it's clear that, I, I think it's clear. I mean, both Mark and, and Tim, I mean, the, the, many, many times they, they said he's be efficient. It seems to me like the main reason for going with the metal versus the hardy plank is it's gonna be cheaper to install. I mean, you just cut to the chase in a big picture. That's, that's kinda the big, big thing. I've marked every place that was hardy plank before and now is, is the metal. And that's, that's just the big difference.
Kinda looking like a kaleidoscope, I would add one more perspective, not necessarily my opinion, but just a perspective. The, the code is a one size fits all. It's, it's very generalized. It's specific, but generalized to every building, every space, every location. And there are differences between buildings and spaces and locations and uses. So looking at, you know, this and where it's at, being very familiar with the site itself and knowing the usage of it, there is consideration that could be made for, for space, um, in, in parts of a, a building that's not gonna be visible to the, the general public or activated to a roadside. And I just, I just ask you to think about that as well.
But, but Chris, I think that, uh, going back and maybe chiming in on with, with Donna was saying or Commissioner Carlton, was we went through it twice before and made considerable, uh, changes, allowances, probably a better word for it. So, I mean, I, I felt like we've taken that into consideration, um, in the previous meetings on that. Not to say there is any room for anything else, but I think there's been a lot of latitude, uh, in the, from the previous meetings.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I agree, the previous meetings, we allowed a lot of latitude. I don't know, this is a, if it were, if it were a time more similar to now, I suspect they would have asked for different things. So, um, I was part of the last time we saw it. I don't know, I know we did spend some time there, but I, I'm not sure that that negates the need to take another look at it.
My comments were, weren't to say not to take another look at it. I would just point out that we did make significant allowances in the previous two, two, uh, sessions.
Right, I agree.
I agree with, uh, a lot of things that are being said here. And if we can take it to the 1766 and go through our A, B, Cs and Ds and take the same ideology that we took into the metal on the north part of Building Four and, uh, you know, the other buildings, I can't go, get them all off the top of my head. And then, yeah, it makes sense with that. But like Dawn said upfront, yeah, we do have to stick with 1766. And if we can meet the guidelines, then it can, we can go with it.
A couple of things to keep in mind, we are in C2. Um, you know, we're not in, uh, in the industrial zone down where we looked at the last, um, um, storage area. So I think that's important to, you know, kinda keep in mind. When we, we had the first hearing on this, there was actually a hearing, Commissioner Mayman, prior to the one I think you're referring to. And the, they, the applicant asked us specifically to define the articulated parts of the building for their planning purposes. So we had a good discussion on that and that, that actually came to three meetings ago. And then, uh, we had, we, they wanted a definition of windows because they were calling the garage doors that opened up into them windows. And, uh, so we made determination that the, the big doors that open up into the storage unit are not windows, they're doors. And we also, um, had a discussion that with vegetation, vegetation can come and go. So if you're using vegetation now to say a building is shielded, hence not articulated, um, or viewed, um, what kind of a slippery slope is, is that if that vegetation goes away? I think the applicant did a good job actually showing that most of the vegetation in that area is deciduous. So during the winter time, you know, you're gonna see a little more than obviously during the summertime, uh, which I, I do agree, it's basically that way. And it is a wetland, so it should be preserved. Um, and I honor what they planned to do in extending that. I'm just wanna point out that we, other than what we're talking about the last one, we had a hearing before that. We covered the articulated part in detail.
I'll just, I'll just add, thank you for that. I, I looked at, um, I was gonna ask two questions about that, Don. I was gonna ask about the vegetation on the wetland and the, uh, the Champion Way. Uh, I think it was Building, uh, Building Two, and then I thought better of it because I, I knew that that is something that could come and go. I was, I guess my comments were more retrospective of the code itself. Um, and looking at activated areas versus frontage that's up against this, a block wall that's gonna be completely engulfed. Is, is that even something that can be considered? Cause as, as true to point to what you were saying about 66, that's not necessarily articulated in that, in that rule. Uh, there, there are, there is something mentioned about providing flexibility and innovation in site planning. And one might consider that looking at the unusual aspects of the property. And again, I'm not trying to advocate for, for a yes. I'm just pointing out that there's, there's other ways to look at it, um, that I'm not sure were considered originally, uh, but maybe they were. I, I, as I said, I didn't watch the video, so I can't comment on that. But, um, I just wanted to make sure we were thinking about that as we, as we go through this process.
Yeah, what we, what we did mainly is we did look at it and we made a kind of determination that the ends of buildings, any of the buildings that aren't large are gonna be seen by people, including the people who are renting there. You know, it could be great if they just wanna make them metal, that's fine. But, um, you know, we didn't distinguish between somebody necessarily driving by Champion Way and somebody who's renting one and going in there, you know, they're on the site. And I think particularly than the north of one is, will be viewed from the entrance to Tractor Supply at the gas station and, and probably from Champion Way. So, um, I, I believe that the north of one definitely should stay articulated.
Actually, that, that's my biggest concern. I mean, I, I think that a lot of the other spaces, the other building fronts aren't such a concern. But that, we talked a long time about the north side of Building One. Um, and as somebody said earlier, that's a main thoroughfare over to Tractor Supply. All the people coming and going through the Arco Station. And, you know, that is gonna be an impression of Sandy. And that was, that was the one side of the one building that I thought was most important.
Well, now I have, I've just been giving comment. I haven't been telling you my, my thoughts, so I'll, I'll go ahead and ensure that with you. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm with, with both of you on Building One. I was a, a no to letting any changes happen to what they originally proposed on Building One. Uh, two, on Building Two, I was okay with it. I'm, I'm Building Three, I didn't have anything. Uh, Building Four, I, I'm really leaning towards no as well because of the activation on Champion. And I'm, I just don't have enough particulars with the wetland to know how much of that building's gonna be covered in by what. Uh, and I, I know that that space coming down industrial way is gonna be visible for a long time. If that vegetation, uh, doesn't grow up fast, it, it's gonna be there. And I don't want it to be a sore, cause that is really a retail space down that road, um, evolving. So, um, I'm a, I'm a no on one and two and three, I'm okay. And in a four, I'm, I'm a no on, I guess.
Um, one thing also to keep in mind, the, um, you know, the windows in the office are probably gonna be active windows, but the windows that are on gonna be active windows, but the windows that are on the storage units are full windows, like on the tractor supply. Okay, cuz I mean, it's a storage unit. You don't want windows up in a storage unit.
Right.
When we had a lengthy discussion on building one, it almost appeared that that building was ground level with the road, the access road that goes to tractor supply and Arco. But it almost appeared in this that it is a little bit below that grade. And there is a fence that does wrap around the front of that building.
Yeah, we don't have an elevation that, that shows that. I understand what you're saying, but you know, there's a driveway there. So, it's setback. It's not like, it's not like, for example.
The applicant's presentation, they had, they had a picture on one of the slides of that. It was an elevation shot, it looked like.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out, it's a little different than the north of three, which is right up against that big retaining wall.
Yeah.
I agree with building one to leave it as original. And two and three, fine with. And then on building four, I really liked what they did on the corner there with it. I was hoping to see a little bit more extended toward the east, some full windows or something. It seems like it's about a third with the hardy plank and then it's just a sheet wall. So, I was hopeful that, you know, trying to make some compromise with metal on it with something to dress it up a little bit. I, I'm not a designer, so I couldn't tell you what that is. But that site is activated.
I'm just, just pointing us back to, folks have had a chance to look at 1766. And if, if you want Emily to pull it up, it's on the screen maybe. But, you know, the, the number A is, is that, you know, that what we're doing, you know, meets the intent and purpose of the, of the regulations. And by that, you're talking about what's the intent and purpose of, of the only, you know, 30% metal accent. And, and then when, if you do come up with the variance, it's the minimum variable, it's the minimum variance needed to permit practical compliance. Now, practical is an interesting word to define. And when you're, when you're looking for 30 and you're granting a, somewhere 90 to 100%, that seems to be a long way. So, I mean, what I'm trying to do is keep us in mind with, there's two parts to code here. There's the code that they want to vary stuff, but then there's the rules by which we give these. And we have to explain if you do it, which one of these you're doing. So, you know, to get from 30 to 34, we can do that. You know, that's an adjustment. We went through that kind of before. But when you're launched, clear into 80 or 90, is that meeting the criteria in 1766?
I, I have a question on that, Don. Now, this is, this may be a clip straight out of the code. I didn't bring my code book. But in Emily's report, as I'm reading it, one of the following sets of criteria shall be applied. And then you would pick either A, B, or C. If that, if I'm reading that correctly, that it would fall into one is, am I reading that correctly, either Emily or David or Kelly or?
Yeah, C really doesn't apply because it's a kind of simplified. It's restoration or replacement. So, you're really up into A and B.
Right. But what, where I was going was, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to fall into the minimum needed if we established that we were following, falling under A.
Yes, you would choose either A, B, or C.
Okay, that's right. And, and as I, as I looked at it, because Don, I really appreciate you pointing us to the, to the code that, that sets the, puts the fences up for, for how we can act. But I would see that letter A is more in keeping with where we're going to be because the unique nature of the proposed development. You know, there's no argument that this is a very unique proposed, well, the development itself is not unique in its proposal because there are storage units other places. But the layout of the land. So, then we'd be looking at the unique nature such that the intent and purpose of the regulations and of the provisions to be waived will not be violated. So, we have to look at intent and purpose, as Don has pointed out. And then, the authorization of the special variance will not be material, materially detrimental to the public welfare and will not be injurious to other property in the area when compared with the effects of development otherwise permitted. I think that, I mean, just given a quick shot, that nothing that's being proposed would be harm, harmful to public welfare. So, we're really zeroing in, as I see it, on A1. And can, if, if we're wanting to deny some of the, these requests, I think it's A1 that we would look at to build our case. Does that make sense? Does that help anybody? Help me?
Yeah, I, this is, this is David here. I think that's right. And it's true that these are, these standards are actually fairly unique to Sandy. And the idea of the special variance, because typically it's, most jurisdictions have the, you do also have a, what I'd call a more traditional variance, set of standards that really gets to also the unique nature mostly of the site itself and that there's a, a real hardship that isn't self-made that would justify varying from what the code would otherwise have. So, the special variance is certainly more flexible. I do think that it is, you know, one of those sets, A, B, or C that you look at. And, and then I think it's really a matter of, of, of getting into, as Jerry said, Commissioner Crosby, that, you know, that, that you, A, get to what the unique nature of the development is such that the intent and purpose of the regulations and of the provisions that are to be waived will not be violated. And so, you know, the, I don't know if 1790 in this instance speaks to something that gets to why, for instance, the code generally prohibits metal siding unless it's, you know, for accent purposes. But I think that's the, the nature and sort of the framework that you'd wanna, you know, work within. And ultimately, I guess I would say, I, I think that Commissioner Carlton is, is probably right, maybe for a slightly different reason, but that, you know, it, it, I, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll say this. I think that if you find yourself even with a more permissive, flexible special variance standard where what you're essentially doing is, is sort of, well, I'm not saying in this case, it's coming real close, where you're basically, you know, at least for some of the buildings, saying, you know, the standard really isn't even applicable. If you're getting close to, you know, 90, 100% of the, of, of a, of an elevation would have the metal siding. I think the question is, is that necessarily consistent with the intention and purpose? And doesn't it, does it really mean more about whether this is a code standard that is, is, is appropriate, just generally? That doesn't do you much good, I admit, in the context of a specific application. But I do think it's sort of worth keeping in mind about, you know, if, if you're looking at a, at a, at a variance that's that extensive, does that say more about, you know, the code standard than it does necessarily about the unique nature of the development or of, you know, the intent of the regulation? So, I, I think that the, the issue in my mind would be, as ever, when you, when it comes to these is what, you know, the, the, the decision you make here, you know, would be something that, albeit, it doesn't mean that the next application that came in and said, well, we would like, you know, to have a, an amount of metal siding that would be consistent with the Sandy vault, that you would automatically have to, you know, that that's your new floor. But it's, it's, it's been a matter of, of, you know, in the next example saying, well, here's what's different between you and the, the old application and being able to make that distinction. So, I would keep that in mind as well.
I, you know, Jerry, I kind of agree with the, all those two. If you read the preamble to this section, it says, "The proposed development explanation shall provide facts and evidence sufficient to enable the planning commission to make findings in compliance with the set criteria set forth in this section while avoiding conflict with the comprehensive plan." And the, the main reason that I've heard from the applicant is that they don't feel it's financially viable to put hardy plank up versus metal.
Right.
That's the explanation. That's, and it's been said many, many, many times. So, the next person comes in, in C2, and they want to build a building, whatever it happens to be, tractor supply, to give you an example. And they're saying, well, we gotta put metal siding on it because if we can't put metal siding on it, it's not financially viable. That's not up to us to decide or make. It's, you know, it's up to the applicant to make their own business decisions as they, as they do. Because, you know, yeah, it was the gamebusters, they got some quotes, it was high. With COVID-19, we don't know what's gonna go on in the future, but it looked, you know, it's very possible you're gonna have a whole bunch of contractors bidding low again because the economy's gonna tank next year. So, we don't know that. But the point is, the applicant has been clear that the main reason they are giving this proposal to us is they want to put up metal versus hardy plank because that makes it economically viable, in their opinion, and their analysis. And that's, that's it. They're given no other reason. And, yeah, I appreciate that they've done a good job and explained to us how wonderful it's gonna look on, on Champion Way, et cetera. But all they're doing there is meeting the code. And you don't get two points for meeting the code there, so you cannot meet the code over here. You know, you try and meet the code on the entire project. So, I just want us to be clear that the justification's given. But if the commission would like to go through each building, building by building now, if, you know, you kind of feel you want to work with it and do something, and that, that's fine.
Jerry, I, I have a quick question.
Sure.
There, are, are we, we're, I, I guess, looking at the report, there's four things we need to come to consensus or, or take a vote on, right? There's, there's increasing the percentage of metal sidings is, is one. There's reducing the required window coverage for buildings one and four is two. There's reducing the activated ability frontages of one and four, that's three. And then there's the 34 modular, modular setup, and that's four. Am I accurate in saying that those are four separate things that we need to cast an opinion on?
Yeah, essentially, essentially three.
Yeah, the fourth. That's what I have.
Yeah, that's at the bottom. You know, Emily has her recommendations right on the bottom of page two. There are four things. And I, I think we can, I would suggest we can put the 34 modular units off because the applicant recommended that. We don't have anything, we don't have it on those. So, I, you know, three of those things, yes, I think that's what it boils down to. You'd be thinking of those three things as you go through the buildings.
Mr. Bruner has his hand raised. If you want to allow him to speak, you can. Otherwise, he can just wait until you guys ask him a question. I just wanted to let you know his hand's been raised.
Okay. What's your thoughts, guys and gal?
If we go through the different ones and do a, a poll, you could start with the 34 units and, I don't know, I'm just trying to think a way to start stepping through this so we can come to something.
Yeah, I, I think the best thing would be to just look at each building because we can piecemeal our decision on, like the metal siding. It's, it's not a, at least that's my understanding, that we don't, it's not a either yes for everything or no for not, no for everything, that we, we could make a building by building, even side by side. Decision on it, is that, that's correct? David, then?
Yes, and that's what I'll actually need to be able to write up the final order, is a decision on each of the 12 that don't meet code.
Okay.
That's what we did before.
Yep.
And, and if you want, I can, I can quickly speak to, I was able to look at the code with respect to reapplication. And so, it's in 1718 and 171890. So, what it says is upon final denial of a development proposal, you, you essentially can't, a new application can't be submitted. And so, I think of that as a reapplication. It's, it's a little bit ambiguous, like so many things in, in the realm of land use. But my, my, my sense would be that, and then there's always this ability for an, an applicant to, to basically submit in writing why the, a proposal has been significantly changed or there's some other factual circumstance that would allow for something earlier than a year. But, but my sense is, is that it, in this case, maybe assuming the, the planning commission were not inclined to grant the request, is to say that, you know, without an application in hand, there's, there's not anything you can really review. But, and if you took that route, I think it would allow for a formal application to be submitted, which you could, you know, look at at that point. And they wouldn't be necessarily prohibited for a year from applying.
So, yeah, I, I see, see what you're saying. So, one of our findings then would be that there was really no proposal for those modular things for us to look at.
Yeah, if that's the route you, you, exactly. If you wanted to go that way, and I think that's the correct answer, since you really don't have anything, as Kelly said, to, to evaluate. You know, it would be, yeah, that's, it would be not, not so much a denial on the merits, but rather nothing to approve, you know, so.
Mm-hmm. Correct. Yeah, I see what you're saying. That would just be, not, you're right. If you understand that it's not, we wouldn't necessarily be denying it, we would be making a finding that there was nothing there for us to look at. Right.
But either way, I think it's, to me, the, the, the code is, is set up, the way I read it ultimately is that you apply for something formally, you get a denial, you are not able to reapply within a year unless there have been circumstances that have, that have really significantly changed. And so, in this case, I really don't think there's been an application yet.
Okay. Okay. Any comments on those, or I think based, just hearing, hearing what's been said on those 34 units, we can put those to rest with that finding? Any disagreement on that? We would just, we're just saying that there's nothing there for us to look at in the proposal. So, it's like a, a non, non item? Yeah, that's good, we got some thumbs up. Zoom voting. All right, let's look at, let's, we've got four buildings to look at quickly. What Don has said, to keep in mind, the three things, percentage of metal siding, the windows changes, and the activation. Let's go to building one. And.
As a suggestion, Jerry?
Yeah.
If Emily, if Emily could bring up her PowerPoint and show each building, you know, and, cuz it has the before and after. We're gonna have to use each other's faces here, but, you know, put up the building and then we'd all have a reference frame.
So, I wanna pull this one up too, because I think there are a couple elevations missing from my slideshow, so we need to make sure that we go through all of the ones here that, except for these four. Um, so I'll pull up the elevations, but there's still gonna be a couple extra.
Okay, that's building one. I, I think what I heard folks say is they want to keep the whole north side activated, um, which means that, um, uh, I guess my suggestion would be that it would look pretty much like it is there, um, but I hear folks saying they are okay with metal, um, from some point on, on further or, or hardy plank.
Chair, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a no on this one. It needs to stay as previously submitted in all three categories.
I, I am as well. Yeah, this is the one side and the one building that I really feel needs to stay the same.
Mm-hmm. Other thoughts? Other people?
Yeah, I guess I'm inclined to agree. I agree that the, out at the public right-of-way that corner that they're really highlighting really is from the public right-of-way, the focal point. But that is gonna be a fairly busy aisle to get to the gas station and tractor supply. So, while it's not a public right-of-way, that, that'll get a lot of visibility along the north elevation of building one.
I agree as well.
I agree with the, uh, previous submittal, even as is.
Okay, and that is speaking to the, uh, percentage of metal, the, um, dropping out of windows, whether they be faux windows or real, and the, um... Retaining that the whole, the whole side is to be activated, considered activated.
Yeah, well, and I think you need to have the, the awnings covering the door, you know, and the windows from a, so at that standpoint, if you have the, you know, if you have the, the gabled ones that you see in the previous, or if they're down below on the current, I don't, you know, either one is fine with me, so. But, you know, that's just meeting code for, I mean, having a covering over a door.
Yeah, well, what we would, uh, be falling back to is what was previously approved. And as Emily said, it was, it was this elevation is our understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, now, does that cover?
We need to look at...
Just one elevation.
Yeah, you just keep, gotta look at the other elevations.
The other one is, just to be kind of difficult, not, I mean, looking for the right word, but do we get everybody's kind of vote in there? I mean...
I heard it pretty much was, uh, people are happy with that.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to, Don, is it pretty much, or is it 5-3, or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think, let me see. Without having everybody's pictures up here, I can't. I think everybody spoke. John, did you speak to that?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I did. I mean, it didn't make a difference, you know, there's a whole motion's gonna come up, and, and, you know, Prince can vote yes or no. But the point is, we're trying to develop a proposal, and, uh, you know, you might be against the entire thing, but you still might say, "Yeah, this is what I'd like that one side to look like." So...
Well, well, no, I, that's what I'm trying to say is, I, I think they're trying to come to is we have these different sides to look at, and then having some clear numbers on who's forward or, you know, for the new versus old. I think, I think, isn't that the road they were trying to go down?
Yeah, so that would be the easiest way, so that when we're, when we're done, we can, the motion would be something like, uh, we, um, we deny all proposals for changes, variances, additional variances on elevation one of building one, and we allow this on elevation two of building one. So, we're gonna, we're gonna custom create, because there's so many, I mean, the, the probability of all these things is pretty high.
Well, and that's what I'm going through, so each one has a consensus of, that's what, trying to get to the, yeah.
Yep, and I think so. And John, you're the one that I don't know that I heard from.
I believe, and I don't know who spoke before I said, "I agree." I agree with that, uh, original frontage elevation on...
All right. But let's, let's move to the...
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, who was that spoke?
Well, it's your applicant.
Oh, well, is that what your hand was raised for?
Yep.
Okay, yes, we'll give you a quick suggestion if you think it might speed things up.
Well, it really had to, has to do with, uh, the north elevation of building one.
Well, I don't know what your suggestion would be to help us. We already have kind of...
They've already made a decision.
We've already, yeah.
Jerry, can I, this is Kelly. So, and David can go into this in more detail, but you guys are basically giving input. We'll have it all written down, and then you'll make a motion. And then, in the final order, which is actually the document that matters more so than this audio and visual from this hearing, it's the final order that can be, um, you know, healed or accepted. So, I think what we'll have to do is just, in great detail, to make sure that you think we captured your motion as a commission in whole.
Yeah, and it's in the positive, you know, we're not gonna, you know, they're either meeting code, or we're gonna say you, we're gonna approve a variance of some type. And at this point, there's no variance for the north elevation.
Correct. And, and we'll, we will have to look at every, every side of every building so that the final order has those details.
Correct. But the good news is only four buildings, not five.
Roll.
And we move on to the east elevation of building one, which would be, um...
Just the south elevation up.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll go by your, uh, your PowerPoint then.
Well, quite, sorry, I, I don't mean to, I don't mean to, um, complicate this more. Are, are we having to cast an opinion on all sides of the building that have already been voted on, or only the requested changes that are applicable to the sides of the buildings?
Well, that, that, that is. I mean, every side of the building, they're requesting a change on. So, there's only four, there's four sides that are in compliance, so we can throw four of them out.
All right, I get you. And I, and I don't think the presentation has all four sides, or maybe it does. I'm sorry. Just, just continue on, I'm sorry.
Okay, south elevation building. Go ahead, Emily.
There, there are a couple elevations that are missing in here. Um, I'll figure out ones that they are. I think it's, I think the west elevation in building one, I don't have a slide for, um, so we can loop back to those after we go through the ones that are in here.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the previous, they didn't give west elevations. I couldn't find any on the previous application for those two buildings.
Okay, looking at, I'm trying to move us along here, um, because we still got another public hearing. Um, south elevation of building one, it looks like the only proposal we're looking at is the siding. I'm assuming, yeah, the, the proposal is showing, um... Onnings over the doors that the, the previous doesn't. And I'm not, I'm not able to get far over to the right to see changes, because I've got pictures of some of you guys up there. Let me...
Well, there's two differences. They, they've made a change on the street side, where, you know, they have a little elevation difference, they have an eyeing. So, there's something going on the street side that's, that, uh, um, there.
Okay, there's, yes, there's an additional stuff on the, I see it now.
But, but in general, they want to go from no metal to 63% metal. So, replacing all the hardy plank with, um, metal, because my assumption in their calculation of the percentages is, it says 63% metal, but that excludes the doors. They, uh, there's 100% of that whole thing, but in all the calculations, the doors or the interest, entrance, uh, to the storage units are, are excluded. They're kind of separate.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think the other one too is, uh, changes that south elevation, you basically can't see except from the, the first, where they're depicting 30 or 40 feet. So, um, that's how I took it to be, that the, uh, majority of it is not visible, so who cares, you know? Why not?
It would be somewhat visible, I think you would be able to see it. But it is the area where you're driving down through, uh, with building one on your right and two on your left.
Yeah, I, I think that the area there's...
I thought that the change...
The wraparound here probably should be hardy plank on the right side of your slide, but then once you get past that, if you look at the, I mean, if you look at the diagram, it actually pops out a little bit. And if it's wrapped around for the area that's popped out, then, then it gets, then it actually gets recessed, and you can't, I agree, you can't see that much from the road.
And I believe it is hardy plank on the...
Yeah.
Right end.
That's what he said on the end, it would be hardy plank.
Okay.
So, I'm for the...
So, that looks good, actually.
Yeah, I'm for the changes.
I agree.
I am as well.
Okay, everybody, others, speak up.
Sorry, I was counting, counting doors, chair. Looks like there's a substantive change in the building height on that right corner. And I, I, and they lost a, they lost a major door too, so, did, did they shorten the, shorten the, the storage building length, I guess? And that's just the end cap of an office? Is that what, is that what that is, the end cap of the office?
Correct.
Yeah, front, front's out on Champion Way.
Yeah.
And a little height difference makes it more interesting, too.
I, I, I would, I would, I would pass the same as the other commissioners. I, I would, I'm okay with the, with the current submittal that they've just put in for this, for this side.
Okay.
We don't have to worry about the, we don't have to worry about the east elevation, because that's when the front's Champion Way, and they spend a lot of time talking about that. That's about the same.
All right, okay.
So, what's the west end look like? It butts straight up against that wall. It seems like there shouldn't be any problem with that being metal. Um, if you look at the, if you look at the, I'm looking at it from bird's eye view.
Yeah. I agree.
East, building two east, building two west.
Other there.
There we go.
Yeah, there is, yeah. Yeah, it fronts right up against that, um... Yeah, I mean, I hope, I mean, it's up to the fire department if there's enough room there to meet code for fire access, but whatever, that's a, it's a sign thing. But, yeah, I'm okay with it being metal.
Any other comments? We're looking at the west end of building one.
I'm okay with the metal there.
I'm okay.
Agreed. Okay, and then the, the east end, we, um, we were okay with that one as proposed?
Mm-hmm. They've done a good job on that.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we finished up on building one. Now, we're on building two, the north elevation. This is what would be facing the south elevation of building one.
You know, one of the things they, in their previous submittal, is, you know, they, they, they kind of have that little elevation differences, you know, that...
The parapets?
Yeah, they, you know, that, that's kind of stuff, kind of like the push poles and, and, uh, and stuff. And, uh, I'd, I like to see that, that back end, um, could pull ahead and probably go with the metal. I mean, the left, the, the, the east side of it is, you know, is part of the, this frontage. I know it's really nice, but, but, you know, as far as metal above the doors, but, um, I like the parapets, I guess, if that's what they are, Kelly. Because remember, this is look, you're, you can kind of see this a bit from, from Champion, as opposed to three and four, which are backways.
Mm-hmm. And this, this one has on the, what would be the left side that we're looking at on the proposal, does have hardy plank on that end.
Yep. That's, that's the champions, that's the champion end of that building, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Yep.
Now, then, this one, it says 34% metal on this new proposal. And so, is that 34% all of the area that's outside of, to the right of the hardy plank and outside of the doors?
Must be.
It's gotta be.
That's what it looks like.
So, this one would be an adjustment, because it's only a snitch over.
Right. Time to...
So, are we okay with the, the metal on this elevation?
I'd say we're okay, if, but I would, you know, Kelly, appreciate your advice here. I like to see the parapets as, as an accent. Maybe this is like a trade-off, but, uh...
Yeah, it's really Emily that needs to give the advice. I, I didn't work much on this recent middle in all honesty. Um...
That's definitely a condition that you could add as part of your approval.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's a cost associated with that. Um, but on the other hand, I'm trying to make my decisions here irrespective of a cost, because that's, that's Mr. Benson's situation. Um, I mean, that's his own business decision.
Doesn't, doesn't that side of the building mirror the, uh, the other elevation from unit one? They should, they should look similar.
Yeah, I was wondering this, the same thing, that even the, uh, north elevation of building one doesn't have... I can't remember, I'd have to go back.
It, it did not have it.
Okay.
The nor, the north elevation of building two is not going to be highly visible with the exception of the east end.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was suggesting, is that it, it, we're, we're not requiring it on, on unit one. Unit two's even less visible. What, why would we require it on, on the mirror face of it?
Uh, yeah, Mike, could you bring up, could you just go back a couple slides and let's look at one again? I'd make the case that you are.
Yeah. That there are parapets.
That's on the, that's on the, that's on the drive side, not on the inside.
Correct.
That's the side that is across building two north facade right there.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They should mirror each other either way, one way or the other.
Actually, we, you have them here, so that's what I'm saying. I think you should have them on the north side of building two.
Where, where are the parapets here?
Uh, the, that the south side of one and the north side of two should mirror each other. I mean, one's not more visible than the other going back. So, the current submittal, I think, is fine.
I'd agree with that. I think you lose the utility of the parapets and, it's just because they wouldn't be visible. So, I'm okay with the current proposal for the north elevation of two.
I am as well.
I agree with that as well.
Okay. I, I would be as well. I'm making notes, so I suspect somebody else is too, but...
Staff, staff's gonna cover us, where they always have.
Yeah. Can we move on to another elevation of, uh, two?
Please.
Yeah, I think it's pretty simple. The east elevation is the front of Champion, and they've done a good job on that. They said they do want to put metal on that very left-hand side.
They're meeting, um...
We already gave them, we already said they could put metal on the south side.
Yeah. On this, in the code, right?
Yeah, they're meeting the code. They have less than 30% metal.
Nothing to talk about there.
Yeah, and on the south side, we already said it was fine, because it's up against it. So, you just need to look at the, uh, the, yeah, the west side of two, if you, uh...
We don't have a current, uh... We don't have a current view of the west of two, correct, Emily?
Yeah, you do.
Right here.
Yeah, it's right there.
Oh, this is the current one? Uh, I meant, I meant, I'm thinking of the, the previous one we approved.
It just changed from hardy plank, right? The metal?
Yeah.
There was no windows on it before?
An elevation of it before. I don't think they did. It was that, it's probably why I didn't have this.
So the, the east.
I was gonna say is the west sides of building one and two and the east sides of building three and four are not going to be visible. Unless you're within the facility itself driving through there.
Yeah, so, you know, that could probably be metal.
I concur.
Yeah.
You know.
All right. So, um, my notes I have in building two, we are okay with everything as proposed on all four sides.
I think that's right.
Yes.
Okay. Three. We're starting with the south, the one facing industrial.
So that's, that's gonna actually face storage unit number four, right?
Number four faces industrial.
Oh, okay, okay. This is the one back against the wall.
The hidden one.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the proposed change.
Yeah.
I am as well.
Yeah, I'm just okay. I just want to, I want the council to, or the commission to recognize if we look at all of the buildings from the previous proposal. They all have some elevation differences on the roof to create some architectural, you know, breakup of a big square building. Regardless of what the purpose is.
And, uh, excuse me, it's not just on the roof. I think those are reliefs.
Well, it almost looks like they're about a push pull kind of a thing with a little bit of elevation.
And just, I mean, from these pictures, it's hard to tell. It just appears to be an architectural feature of the building on the previously submitted. But it's, it's also not public facing building space, except for the end, which they have elevated.
Well, if we go back to the code and go back to the design criteria within, within this. I mean, let's go back to Fred Meyer for the moment. That's a long time back, but why does Fred Meyer look like Fred Meyer? They originally came in and proposed a square Walmart building from, from thirty years ago. And through work you have what, you know, the push poles, the colors, the different accents, et cetera. This is in C two. So the intent is to, to, you know, have buildings with some, you know, some character. They're just not basically warehouse boxes.
Actually an I one.
Okay, still, okay, I want C two or supposedly have the same code. So anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree, I agree with, with Don saying, but I think we're trying to do here is to work with the applicant. Understand the things that they're dealing with. And again, this elevation is not visible unless you're on the site. So anyway, that articulation, the push pull is for the stakes of somebody going by and looking at, not necessarily the people using it. So I'm okay with the revise, revisements for that on the, on that basis.
You know, I, I was gonna state the same thing. I, I understand what Commissioner calls insane. I, I just feel the end cap is the primary point of vision on it. And they've done a good job with their, with their submittal here. So I'm okay with the current submittal that they're presenting.
Okay, let's move to another elevation on three.
Again, that's not going to be visible.
Any issues there?
I just wanted to clarify when we're talking about which end of the building this is, this is not the end that's, that's got the wraparound. This is the other end of that building, right?
It's the, it's the east end where it's mountain hood.
I got, okay, I'm, I'm fine with the current.
Okay. We have another one on three.
Well, three, your north one, we get, we allowed them to, we said they could put all metal on the north side before.
Yeah.
Building four, north elevation with a change. This would be facing building three.
Right.
So this one I'm missing, I'm missing the, the wraparound.
Yeah.
On it. With the height change.
Well, the south elevation has the wraparound and then they, if you look at the south for a second, which is what you first see when you come up, it's got the wraparound. So this is the part that faces interior to the property. And faces directly across the street from the, from the other building. But the other building has the wraparound on it.
Yeah, all other of the buildings that had the corner wraps on it went around all three sides. This one doesn't appear, the height changes, it drops flat and there's an awning there. It's missing that, that end cut.
It kind of follows all the, the other buildings. This elevation is not visible from the streets. The only way you'd see it is if you were driving down the, the alley between buildings three and four.
So you're gonna, you're gonna see it.
You're gonna see it.
See it right as you turn off of, you're gonna look right at it from industrial way. It's the first one you see. Why we call this the articulated part of that building.
Can you pull up, uh, an elevation of that end, Emily?
The south end is, we'll give you the reference.
Yeah, okay. The south end of building four.
Or, see, there's, what it does, what we're saying is it doesn't wrap around to the north side.
Correct.
Right. So that's, and I'm, and I'm just to skip ahead, I'm good with that side. But I want the other side to match that side. So it wraps, it wraps that building. That's what I'm asking for.
Well, and if you look directly across at the south elevation of three, then they mirror each other.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Cause three is wrapped on that end too, right? Around that corner we just did. It's wrapped all the way around.
Uh, not wrapped on the north end because the north ends up against the rock wall. It's only wrapped on two sides.
Yeah, I, I have something written here that I think will capture. I'll go through these real fast at the end. I think I have some written that captures your concern on that.
Okay. On the north elevation of four.
Yeah.
All right. The south elevation of four, we're looking at now. And this is the loss of windows.
This is where they want to change. We said this entire frontage was articulated two meetings ago.
Right.
And that's why they built this the way they built it. They want to now say only the portion that you see at the bottom with the brick at the bottom, et cetera, is articulated. Which looks maybe a fourth to the most of the building, maybe a fifth of it.
And that's all along industrial, right?
Yeah, if then they, they're saying they're gonna screen it with vegetation, additional vegetation in that wetland area.
To me, this is like building one, it needs to stay articulated all the way across the face of it. It's, it's the, it's the point of contact for people coming up and down that road, regardless of how much wetland they put in front of it.
I'm with Commissioner Maiden.
I am too. That's what we just
I am as well.
Yeah.
So then you want to, then you want metal on everything. Uh, right now it's got hardy plank on everything.
Yeah, I'm like I was on one previously submitted, which was hardy plank.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
Mid middle where the circles are, I believe.
Right. And I'm, like I said, I was okay with what you agreed to the initial time. That's, I think that's, that looks, has a good feel and look to it. Will, will kind of mirror the opposite end of the lot on one where you're driving into tractor supply. Coming down industrial, it gives you good visual to.
So are we saying on this one, as previously submitted, in other words, the top one as this or as a modification, what are your thoughts on the, the look of the wraparound on the proposal? In other words, I'm wondering, are we wanting the, the north one, but had the wraparound at the bottom or does that matter?
That's kind of you, we want our cake and eat it too. You know, I mean, if they could add on some of the design elements on the new submittal, that would be great. But I wouldn't want to do it in lieu of getting a quarter of the building done as opposed to all of it.
I, I had one question about the, the previously submitted for the windows. Is there a requirement for awnings over those windows? Cause all the other ones appeared to have, have pictures of it, but this one does not.
It's an Emily question.
Um, so when you guys approved this previously, you approved it with putting the landscape trellises in and the awnings over the windows on this elevation. I also wanted to clarify, these are just different renderings. So there is still split face block veneer on the bottom here, here and here. So they're just, they're just showing it here with, you know, looking more like a brick. And here it's just more like lateral, but it's the same material that hasn't changed.
Okay, thank you.
So there will be, there will be awnings on those windows is what I heard you say. Is that right?
That's what you guys approved last time. You, you approved this facade with condition that they add landscape trellises in these two areas and awnings over all of these windows here. But you approved it at percent metal here and here.
So, so if you mirror these two together, what we're saying is you want the current submittal for the, you know, all the left end side. Then if you go up above, we're okay with it then to the, to the east with metal in the, where the blues are or the greens are, hardy plank with the others are awnings over the windows. Is that what we're saying? Or do you want those other two pop outs to look identical to the one that's down on the current submittal?
Well, Emily was kind of saying that it could look like that, that the, the top one just does not showing the split block.
Yeah, if you look here, it's split face block veneer. Is it kind of wider? It's just, it's just drawn differently here. And then you guys had approved it with this awning. So on this, it all they drew in the awning that you guys conditioned last time. But other than that, these should be, they, they don't look the same, but they are the same.
Yes, I, I got you. Yeah, I, I'm with you too.
So is the, I guess I'm a little bit confused though. The current submittal appears to me like they plan to put a brick base on it. Is that?
So the, the original, the previous submit on the top was the original submission. That does not include the conditions that you had in the previous.
I, I agree. I mean, I understand that.
Is in both. It's just showing, it's just a different hatching.
Okay, so would there, there would be, there would be brick all the way down the building?
Not in the two spaces.
At the bottom of those two pop outs. Okay.
Okay, so we're saying the south elevation, no, no changes.
No changes to what was previously approved.
Okay.
Correct.
And now notice that's got some of those, that's got the little higher roof pieces there. I mean, those are other pop outs. So there, there's also an elevation difference of those two as opposed to just the vertical for the, the, the pop out part.
That gives, that gives kind of the architectural feature that one gives on the other side that has the arches over each of the, the openings. That gives, gives it context.
Right.
Okay, go to the ends of the caps of building four.
Which one? That's the east. That's all metal.
So is that, east is the drive, goes towards the drive, right? The drive, the
No, east goes towards
My, I'm sorry, sorry, my hood, sorry. All right.
I guess I'm gonna bring a compass to the next mission, commission meeting.
I was in the Navy. I shouldn't be geographically challenged.
Oh, okay, starboard and port.
There you go, there you go.
I don't think the west have any changes.
West elevation, this is, um, as we approved or is this?
That, that's the side that faces as you turn down that, that, that driveway, that's, that's the, the visible corner.
Yeah, it's visible. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it should.
Stay as previously approved.
Yeah, it looks about the same. It's got the awnings on it. The, the difference was the number of windows isn't important, the percentage of windows is important. So, um, you know, there's three windows and in the presentation, we added a window. Well, there was three before, there's three now. I mean, this whole idea of three windows is academic. The question is, what's the percent of the window covering? If it meets and then, no, it doesn't meet or not meet.
That's actually not entirely true because the code also speaks to the maximum dimensions that a window, individual window can have.
Sure. But there was, the point of the discussion that they need to add a window. When I was confused on that one, I read the staff report because there were three windows in the beginning and they proposed three windows, so. Okay, they were just a little smaller.
Right, I have a synopsis. If you want me to read it real fast, I'll zip through it just to make sure it matches Jerry's notes.
Okay, fire away.
The building one, north facade needs to stay as previously approved and file number eighteen dash zero four seven. South, south facade modifications are approved. West facade modifications are approved. East facade needs to stay as previously approved and file number eighteen dash zero four seven.
Isn't that east facade? So this is a building one?
Yep.
Were there modifications to that? I thought we like, I thought we agreed with the proposed.
Yeah, we just want to have it very clear in the final order.
I have down on that one that, that as they proposed, I think I was thinking like Todd that they're, at least they're, their renderings were different than the original.
That, that's why we'd be saying as previously approved and file number eighteen four seven. Cause eighteen four seven will have the conditions that need to be modified to those facades.
But what wasn't, nothing had to be modified on the east elevation of one, did it?
Might have. I don't know. You'd have to go back to the conditions of the original approval.
Yeah, see, I don't see anything there, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I would stay away from saying as proposed on the slideshow because if you guys already approved conditions previously, those are, like Ron said, that's kind of the conditions that were imposed last time. Unless, unless you're wanting to make additional conditions.
Okay, whatever your advice is.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kelly, you, 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 you know what our, the intent or the consensus intent is. So word it to make it all legal, schmiggle for us.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just leave it a, if you don't want to make any changes to a certain facade, I would just leave it consistent with what you approved in the last file. That'd be my advice.
Okay, cause that'll wrap up everything around it, all the conditions and stuff like that. That we aren't seeing or maybe even thinking about.
Correct. Okay, so building two, I got north facade modifications are approved. South facade, there's no modifications proposed. The west, so it'd be previously approved in file number eighteen dash zero four seven. The west facade modifications are approved and the east facade modifications are approved, which just included an additional twenty facade modifications are approved, which just included an additional twenty-four percent metal, but it was still within the code.
Okay, that's what I had.
Building three, north facade needs to stay as previously approved and file number eighteen four seven. They, they weren't really proposing any changes since that's the wall that faces the big retaining wall. Uh, south facade modifications are approved. West facade needs to stay as previously approved and file number eighteen dash zero four seven. And east facade modifications are approved. And then building four, here's the tricky one. North facade modifications are approved, but the parapet height needs to remain the same on the west end of building two as built. Sorry, I'll read that again. The north facade modifications are approved, but the parapet height needs to remain the same on the west end of building four as the south elevation.
Okay.
Basically, you'd just be bringing that parapet height through there. South facade needs to stay as previously approved and file number eighteen dash zero four seven. West facade needs to stay as previously approved and file number eighteen dash zero four seven. East facade modifications are approved.
Okay. Before we go to the next step, we need to close the public hearing.
I move, we close the public hearing.
I need to, I need to ask a clarifying question for the final order. For the windows on buildings three and four, I'm not clear what you guys decided. Do you want them to meet the thirty percent as you previously approved or, or not? And you want them to add another window or not?
What all of those? We can, we can still close the public hearing and still answer your question, so. I don't, I don't want to forget about it. So motion was made.
Second.
Who was first on that motion and who was second?
Don, I, I moved, Don.
I can't go off name alone, and then second was Mayton?
Yes.
Okay, and we will do a, a roll call vote on this.
Okay.
All in favor of closing public hearing at nine thirty-two, my goodness.
Commissioner Carlton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayton?
Yes.
Chairman Crosby?
Yes. Okay, now we can answer Emily's question.
I didn't have any changes to the windows.
Wait, Emily?
Pop us up a picture.
Oh, she got four up, so.
Well, I mean, this is the west elevation, building four on the PowerPoint, it was, oops. Here's building three, so they had, you know, again, the, the ground changed, but it was twenty-three percent windows. And you had required them to add an additional window and meet the thirty percent. And I just want to know if you're sticking with that or changing your mind on it.
The, the one in the bottom where it says forty percent windows is, you, you said that may be different with the change of the ground.
Yeah, I'm, can you bring up the west elevation? From your, your kind of, your slides that show the new and the old?
So this is the west elevation on the new.
Yeah, it just seems like that is maybe at least thirty percent. I mean, I don't know, I'm just looking at perceptually because of the way the ground slopes there, but you just have to do the arithmetic.
This one's different, I don't, I think with building four, it's still, oh, let's see. It's still less than thirty percent.
I'm okay with them being twenty-three or so.
Uh huh, yeah.
I don't think adding a window helps particularly on the, the way they, if the diagram is right, on the west elevation of three, I don't know how you stick another window in there.
That's what I was gonna say too, if, if the renderings are correct in any sense, that I don't know where you put another window.
Yeah. Does that help you, Emily?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're, if there's no further discussion, I think we have discussed everything. And I don't know that we need to put it into one huge humongous motion. We can, somebody can reference Kelly's summary of the buildings and we need to throw in the thirty-four units which that are just put based on a finding that there was nothing proposed for us to look at.
The, the other thing in the motion I'd be clear on is there's three things here over here on the second page. The first one are the, is their articulation. So are we saying, since we left the north side of one the same and the south side of four the same, that we are denying their request for change in articulation?
Or activation, right?
Activation, yeah, sorry about that.
That, that type three design deviation was a, would be a denial.
Okay. I'm looking at something here, Don.
And then it would be the same for the one above that, right? For reducing the required window coverage in buildings one and four. We just said keep them the same, so that would, what would, that, that second one would also be a denial.
Yeah, they want to go to seven point three percent. So by definition, they'd be back up to whatever they were originally.
So really, it's just the first type three special variance for metal and that's a verif, and that's kind of
Right.
A modified because it's, it's good for some but not for others.
Right, we picked that one apart.
Did we, so just to be clear here, I, I recall that the, I think Commissioner Maven summarized it on this, on the south side of four, that would, that remains articulated. And you said that we'd have hardy plank on that, except for metal in the two places that had the green ellipses, is that correct? And if that's the case, uh, just want to make sure we're all clear on the north side of one, where the hardy plank is and where the metal is.
We made no changes on the north side of one.
Okay, so there's no metal on the north side of one.
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure we, don't want to, you know, beat it to the death, but just make sure we're all clear.
Can, from my notes, Kelly, can I ask for building two? Can you give me what the determination was on the north and south again? Sorry, those are the only two I forgot to write down.
Uh, the north facade modifications were approved and the south facade needs to stay as previously approved and file number eighteen zero four seven.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's for building four?
No, that was building two, Don.
Two. Okay, okay.
I've got them all on my handwritten notes now.
Do we need to, in this motion, and maybe David would answer, do we need to make something in the motion about those thirty-four units, or can we just go with a finding?
I would have something in the motion and, and just something the effect of that the, because they, there was no application proposed, uh, there's nothing for the planning commission to approve. I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
Jeremy, want me to give a shot?
Go for it.
Once you close the, once we, so we can see, see people here. Maybe Emily could get rid of the graphic or quit sharing her screen, there you go.
All right, so bear with me, I'm gonna try to do it. Chairman, I recommend that we approve the type three special variance to section seventeen ninety-one twenty to increase the percentage of metal siding on buildings one through four to eighty percent with the modifications as listed in our discussions for each building. I recommend we deny type three special variance section seventeen ninety-one twenty to reduce the required window coverage for buildings one and four. And I also recommend that we deny the type three design deviation to section seventeen ninety-one twenty to reduce the activated frontage on buildings one and four as previously identified and approved by the planning commission and also deny the thirty-four modular units as proposed.
Or, or actually the finding that there wasn't anything proposed for us.
The finding on the thirty-four buildings that were never proposed.
That works. Okay.
Well done.
Yeah. Except you moved, you didn't recommend you moved.
Who seconded?
Do you need a second? I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
I think Lasowski seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Shared second. I'm not going to repeat the motion, I believe you understood it, it was spoken soon enough ago. So we will move to a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Carlton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayton?
Yes.
Chairman Crosby?
Yes, motion carries. We ready for a little break?
Three minutes here.
I think five minutes.
Stretch.
Yep, we'll be back.
This is why it's really hard to have more than one in an evening.
The next one will be a lot quicker, so. Good job, Emily.
I think we have everybody here. Okay. I'll do the clock on the table. And we will open this public hearing at nine forty-seven. And this is for application nineteen dash zero one seven Trillium Machine. I call, start with calling for any abstentions from the planning commission. No heads nodded or, or thumbs up or anything? Any conflicts of interest to declare? Okay, nothing noted? Any expart take contact, including any site visits? Or awareness of the site?
Well, I'm aware of the site, I looked at it airily just to Google Earth.
Uh huh. We probably all have driven by it in the last week or so. Okay, any challenges to any, any other challenges to any individual commissioner? And again, I'll remind the audience that if you wish to participate and you're in the Zoom meeting, you just click your, the raise your hand button and then wait to be acknowledged. If you're on the telephone, dial star nine and then wait to be recognized. And that will raise your hand as well. Okay, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing. state law grants any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the land use board of appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Staff report.
Right. Get my screen again. So we're here now looking at Trillium machine. There are outlined in red between highway twenty six industrial way. I do want to point out this is in the I two zone, light industrial. So this is very different than the last we looked at. We looked at was I one, which was our same, the same as our C two design standards. These design standards are a lot less stringent because this is the I two light industrial zone. So just keep that in mind. Just zoom into the site here to see the existing, existing building there. And then again, industrial ways on the south and highway twenty six on the north. The request is to construct a new ten thousand square foot industrial building behind the existing one. And this is just to expand the current operations. There won't be any additional employees on the site. That will just all remain the same. There's also currently two driveways. They're proposing to remove the one on the west and then to move the one on the east fifteen feet further west. So to reduce it down to one driveway, which is what our code would want by shifting one over and removing one. They're also requesting to remove four trees, but the arborist has recommended an additional six trees that would need to be removed based on the impacts that would likely occur due to construction. So the real meat of it though is they're requesting six special variances or deviations. So I'm going to go through each one of these separately. So I'm not going to read them here. But this, this is just a comprehensive list of the six things that they're requesting in conjunction with this application to put a new industrial building on the site. The overall site plan, the new building is outlined there in red. Again, industrial ways on the left there. And then you can see the existing building and kind of the new proposed parking and driveway entrance. And then there's a tree buffer at the back or on the right hand side here. And then there is also kind of a vegetative buffer along industrial way, and we'll get into that a little bit more. The first request is a deviation to not provide for a future street and pedestrian network to the adjacent properties within the site. So they'd actually in their application requested a deviation to section seventeen eighty two thirty D. But that's actually our transit street chapter. It doesn't apply to industrial zones and deviations are allowed in seventeen ninety. So based on the request, what we deduced is that they're asking for a deviation to seventeen ninety one thirty eight six, which talks about connections between neighboring developments. This is sort of like the way the Safeway connects over to the Starbucks or Best Western, whatever is just west of there. The property is currently fenced and neither the property to the east or the west has a driveway or pedestrian walkway within the property that they would connect to. And we think that the future sidewalk on industrial way would provide sufficient connectivity between parcels, this parcel and parcel to the east or the west. So we are recommending approval of this request. Next deviation is to eliminate the requirement that facade shall be varied and articulated to provide visual interest pedestrians. So you know, the intent of this section of the code is to have aesthetic variation on the walls of buildings for visual interest and so they don't have long imposing wall surfaces. They're requesting a deviation. There's buildings not adjacent to the street or easily visible. Part of that is because of the vegetative buffer and a long industrial way. However, the arborist is recommending that seven of the trees in that vegetative buffer would be removed because of the proposed construction. So we are recommending approval of this deviation, but provided that we all, that you also require them to plant a mix of mitigation trees and shrubs at a sufficient quantity to provide a partial buffer within two years of the date they're planted. And that they paint the building, the new proposed building, a color from the approved sandy color palette that would blend with the vegetation. Third request is a special variance to not provide a change in relief on ten percent of the sods facing public streets. So the, the applicant's narrative states we're located in an inconspicuous industrial area with a twenty foot vegetation buffer screen to block the existing building from view of public right of way. I think that would also then carry over to the proposed building. However, again, the seven trees only to be removed from that vegetative buffer along industrial way. But with additional planting in that buffer, it is true, the building could possibly be largely screened from the right of way. It is set back quite a bit too. So the change in relief might not be that visible. So we are recommending approval of this special variance as well and provided that there's a mix of plants in that vegetative buffer along industrial and that the building is painted a color from the approved sandy color palette. Next, they're requesting a deviation to eliminate the requirement to incorporate pedestrian features like arcades, awnings, roof, porches, alcoves and porticoes along the building. I think we talked about this in another application recently. Our code does like to have kind of awnings and porticoes along all pedestrian walkways around all sides of the building. So they're requesting a deviation to not provide that. They're stating that this is an industrial area. It's not open to the public. So although employees might benefit also from these, you know, awnings, it is a steel framed metal building. So we understand that and are recommending approval of this requested deviation as well. I should, I should point out that doesn't include the separate requirement, which is to have the four foot awning over pedestrian mandors. That would, that would still remain. This is just sort of the additional porticoes and arcades and awnings that would go along the sides of the buildings. So they're requesting a special variance to roof pitch to provide less than required three twelve roof pitch. According to the narrative, the existing building has a one twelve roof pitch and they're proposing to match that. Again, the building will be set back. There will be that vegetative buffer along industrial. And they also state that the neighboring developments have a one to twelve roof pitches as well. So we feel that because it's matching the existing building and other buildings that it meets the intent of the code. We're requesting or recommending approval of this special variance as well to allow one twelve roof pitch. We are recommending, if you approve it, you require them to choose a color from, from the metal roof palette. It's approved by the city of Sandy. And then we also know that because it is a rather flat roof and one of our five guiding principles of sandy style is to encourage green building practices. We as staff would also be supportive of a vegetative green roof. So the next they're asking for a deviation to eliminate the requirement of an entrance connecting directly between the right of way and the building interior. The narrative is stating that having a direct connection between the right way in the building's interior would conflict with the driveway and parking area requirements. As was noted before, the property is fenced in. There's a gate at the driveway and it's not really likely that someone from the public aside from employee would actually access the site. So we are recommending approval of this as well. And this last slide, very text heavy, just summarizes them in case you want to look over these six things that you'll be making a decision on tonight. So that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Emily. Any questions of staff at this moment? Okay, we'll move on to the applicant's fifteen minute presentation.
Thank you for taking the time to hurry out tonight. My name is Jeffrey Beeson. I work for Gallup Construction in Banks, Oregon. The address is five zero two seven one Northwest Staley Road, nine seven one zero six. I am representing Trillium Machinery tonight. I'll try and keep things relatively brief compared to the previous one. So in terms of addressing the six items that Emily has outlined for you, there's several, or one that I wanted to, I wanted to go through a specific order on these here. And the first one would be, and if you guys are okay with me sharing my screen for if I need to point to specific items from the agenda, if that is all right. The first one that I'm just going to be looking at is the direct connection between the right of way and the building interior. And this is under the subsection seventeen point nine zero point three zero E three, I believe. And it's on page two eleven of the agenda here. Sorry. Or sorry. Or sorry, specifically I was referencing exhibit D and page two eleven of the agenda. And I think part of it for us is possibly just clarification, maybe some confusion on what qualifies as a door to the interior, especially being in line with the public right of way coming on from industrial way. And I guess I will see if I can share this here. One sec.
We got it.
All right. So I'm looking at here is, there is a doorway here on my cursor. That is the doorway into the office inside that building. And adjacent to that to the left is a overhead door. Based on the plans, which I believe I can just back up a page here. It might be two pages. That section of the building would fall, the overhead door would fall right in this area and the front door would fall, or the door into the office would fall here. The reason we had applied for this is it seemed like we're talking about the interior of this building. It is a prefabricated metal building. The office portion is actually constructed inside as a separate structure inside there. And so we're assuming that when referring to interior, they're referring to the steel interior of the building, not necessarily the office interior of the building, seeing how it's technically a separate structure within the steel structure. Would I be right to assume that?
What?
Sorry. Basically, what the reason why we're applying for that specifically is so that the doorway that is entering into the office alongside the front, and I will scroll back down to that page on exhibit D. Hoping that this qualifies as an entrance into the interior building, even though it is technically into the office itself. So that's the first item on the, that we're hoping to address. And in terms of intent, under chapter seventeen point nine, I would reference, sorry, one sec here. Would be a part, part C, number three, and it says to emphasize a village scale and character and new development. Village scale means development is compact and walkable. Building entrances are oriented to the street, sidewalk or plaza. In this case, the building for the office would be oriented to and large building masses are broken down through a combination of design elements such as articulation and combinations of complementary building materials in detail. In terms of the intent of this part of it, we feel that this variance for us adheres to that. And so we're hoping that that would be seen as, at least with that. Moving on to the facades being varied and articulated according to subsection seventeen point nine zero point one three zero C one. And actually, I'm gonna try and actually kind of abbreviate this. Lump those together along with two others, which would be the ones for the ten percent of the facade facing the public street, which is seventeen point nine point one three zero C five. And then also roof pitch at our variance applying for a one to twelve roof pitch as opposed to the three to twelve as according to seventeen point nine zero point one three zero D one. And what we're trying to do with, in turn to this section would be actually still based off of the design standards there. It would be part B. And it's to encourage functional, safe and aesthetically pleasing development while maintaining compatibility surrounding built in natural environment. And in applying for these articulated facades and, or the request to have a variation so that we don't have to do that as well as the the chain being relieved of the requirement for a change in relief on ten percent of the facade as well as having the roof pitch. All of these are trying to match the current building that is on site. And so by, in doing this, we're trying to we're trying to match what's already on there according to section B. They're trying to maintain compatibility with the surrounding built and natural environment. And going back to what's already been recommended by the city of Sandy to us, and I can share this specifically, or actually I can just read it if that's more helpful here. On page, I believe it's one seventy nine of the agenda. Their recommendations are to sorry, one sec here. Their recommendations were that, like Emily had been reading, was that we would be approved. Sorry, that, oh, here we are. Yeah, is page one seventy eight. It starts at the very end. So the deviations for their articulated facades, there are ten percent relief on the facade and also the three twelve roof pitch. The main stipulations that they were recommending at least is that we stick to a color palette within that is along the sandy palette of colors that they have for blending harmoniously with the surrounding vegetation. And we see no issue with that at all in terms of meeting that requirement. As well as in doing and having everything here, the way we're asking for it to be what these parts were asking to be relieved of. We are hoping that it still coincides with the intent of chapter seventeen, section point nine zero, part B there by trying to have it blend in with what's already there. And also, like she mentioned, this is set back already considerably on the property and will be screened by potential trees that are already on the front side of the property. I know though, that there is some concern though with trees being removed out there that maybe it might not be screened as much. And I will get to that actually in a second here. And the last part that I wanted to address. And the last part that I wanted to address before getting to the, the front side of the property is also the awnings. When we are initially applying for the, we're having awnings, porticoes, all of the, the coverings essentially around the building. I think there, at least on our part, there was some misunderstanding during our initial meeting with the city during the pre-op notes. And it was in those that we were assuming, we didn't realize that there was a separate section for four-foot awnings over doorways that is necessary. So we were assuming that when we looked at this, that this was including those at the time. When looking at this, the only issue we're seeing is not necessarily being a huge issue of having these awnings over the doorways covering them. It's one of the issues that we're potentially thinking of is on the backside. And that, not that this is a huge problem, but there is an emergency exit that will be on the backside of the building. And providing an awning for a door on the backside of the building that's essentially unused other than in emergencies, which no one would be standing under the awning on the backside of the building during that emergency if there is a fire escape there. I don't know if it's a possibility that we could have that as a exception to the rule on that. And if not, that's okay, but we were hoping that there would be at least some flexibility within that. And then the final thing I wanted to address, which was in terms of on our variances that we applied for, for the sidewalks joining neighboring properties. I know there was a typo actually on that. It was supposed to say 17.84.30D, not 17.82.30D. And really, what we're trying to get at is, which I guess some of this clarification has come in the agenda in terms of the notes from the city, that you can't get out of applying, I believe it's half-street improvements is the term they use, along the, along Industrial Way, which is not exactly what we were trying to go for on that at all. Because the real issue, what it's coming down to is the, there are a lot of the trees. If you've, and I, you guys saw the picture, I believe, and I don't know if it helps. Some of you have used Google, have looked at it using Google Earth. I don't know if it's helpful for me to possibly just share that image here for what we're looking at in terms of trees that possibly might be removed. So I'll just put it up here if you guys can see that. I'm hoping it shows up properly.
It looks good.
Okay. So the issue that we're running into is that, from my understanding, there's provision for the half-street improvements to have both a five-foot planter box or a planter running along the side of the street that would run between the street and the sidewalk. And then the sidewalks are being a standard six-foot. Based off what we're seeing right here, the tree that's dead center, which if you, I can, let me share one other page here for you. So this is for the, the trees and the arborist report in terms of numbering. That tree would be number eight there, which definitely, if we had to include the total of 11 feet for a sidewalk and a planter box, that would require the movement, removal of that as well as several other trees potentially there because we're getting so close to the roots. It's the desire of the owner that honestly, if we could keep all these trees here, that would be optimal and actually preferred because they're already in place. They already offer beauty to the property in the area. And we prefer to not have to remove any of these, even though the arborist, I do know that the arborist has suggested that trees 1, 2, 3, 4, 8, 11, and 12 be removed on this front section. In addition to three on the backside of the property, but the main ones I wanted to focus on were these. We're trying to avoid removing any of these other than to accommodate the driveway expansion with number 12. And sorry, one second here. And let me bring that one back up. So that would be number 12 here is what we're trying to avoid. I mean, that we're gonna have to do in order to shift the driveway over. But there's also the recommendation for 11, 3, 4, 8, and 1 and 2 as well to be removed. Ultimately, we understand that there wants to be provision for future connections with the sidewalk along the way of Industrial Way. And what we're hoping for, and one of the neighboring properties down off of Southeast 362nd and Industrial down there actually currently has this. It is a sidewalk without the planter box on the street side. They do have trees on the opposite side. And what we're hoping is at least at a minimum to do something similar. And that might allow us, with the arborist's approval, to be able to preserve most of those trees there. 1 and 2 would likely have to be removed still. But we might be able to, if we didn't have to do a six-foot sidewalk and maybe we could do a four-foot, we might be able to preserve a tree number eight as well. And from my understanding, the reason why the arborist would want trees number three and four room, would, removed is because they're thinking with the removal of that western access driveway here, we would be potentially disturbing the soil. We're pretty confident that we can actually do it with minimal invasiveness in terms of disturbing the topsoil. Basically, we're gonna be taken off, it's a very, very thin layer of asphalt. And we'd basically be just taking off the asphalt and whatever underlying rock is immediately there. Likely, it's something that we can do with shovels as opposed to having to use a backhoe to try and scoop all of that out of there. So our desire is to try and preserve 3 and 4 if possible in all of this. And so like I said, the only ones that we know that would probably have to be removed if we're gonna include that sidewalk would be 1 and 2, and then number 12 for the gateway. And that's all I guess I have to say on that currently.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah, sorry, that was it.
Okay, yes, Mr. May.
Can I ask a question, please? I was confused ever since reading this. If I'm looking at the property and the placement of that building, it's in the green space between 26 and the existing building, right? Well, I mean, on the other side of the trees, right? The door that you're speaking about that goes into the office, where is that gonna be located in relation to this, to this property? Is it on, is it, is it toward the tree line or towards the, towards the parking lot?
Sorry, I was trying to point that out when I was sharing. Let me see if I can just open it up really quick here.
I can tell you it's towards the parking lot.
Yeah, it's gonna be over the parking lot area.
See it from Industrial.
Okay, just when I was looking at the paper, it looked like it was off to the side of the, it was off the side of the building going into the adjacent property. And I was like, where, how does that fit?
It will be on the, if you're on the southeast corner of that building, if that makes sense. And the overhead door is just adjacent to that, to the west of it, if that makes sense.
And it's, and it, both, both of those are, are in line with the parking lot area.
Correct, yes.
Existing, okay, that makes sense. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. We will move on to public testimony with a reminder that testimony will be called in three groups. Those in favor, those opposed, and those that are neutral. If you're participating through Zoom, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and then wait to be recognized. If you're on the phone, dial *9 to quote-unquote "raise your hand" at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. So we'll move into testimony in favor of the proposal. And I'll remind you, if you're speaking, any public testimony, to give us your name and your mailing address for the record. So we're looking for those that are in favor of the proposal.
Women, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. We'll move on to opponent testimony. If you are against the proposal, you have your three minutes.
Again, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, and then we'll go to just, if you're neither for it or against it, but just have a general comments, you're neutral on it, would like to speak. Again, give us your name and your mailing address. And raise your hand.
Again, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. We'll move to staff recap.
Okay, so I'm not quite sure I followed the first question, but I think it was that whether the door to the office or the interior, and I think that it would. The code section really speaks to something entirely different, which is more about a pedestrian connection from the sidewalk on Industrial Way to the entrance of that building. That's what the code, we want to see. Sidewalk or a striped walkway or some sort of pedestrian connection between the, the street right-of-way and the primary entrance to the building. We are recommending approval of a deviation to not have to provide that. So I don't really see what the issue is. In terms of the four-foot awning over the emergency exit door, I think, I think it would be fine to not have it over the emergency exit. I think the intent is really over the main, you know. I mean, it is really over all of the pedestrian door. If it's really just an emergency exit, then I don't think it's a often-used door. So in terms of the intent of the code, I think that would be fine as long as it's on that main door on the, I guess, south elevation. I think we're in agreement on kind of the reasoning behind sort of supporting variances and deviations related to articulation, the 10% real, and the roof pitch, as long as the vegetative screen on Industrial planted, if those trees are removed and as long as the building is compliant with Sandy, the Sandy color palette, those are all fine to approve. Regarding the trees, it can be great if, if you can work with the arborist to retain more trees. Just seen based on, on his evaluation that some of those would need to go. I believe the three of them are in the right-of-way. So those would likely have to go. The sidewalk requirements, you would be working with our Public Works Director on that. We do have provisions that allow for narrowing, narrowing the landscape planting strip or doing like curb-tight sidewalk or something like that to save mature trees. That is written into our code. And our Public Works Director did submit a comment that said the sidewalk alignment and/or the planter strip width may be varied to preserve existing healthy trees. So there is some flexibility in that. Again, that would be something you'd work on with Public Works down the line, like during construction. But there is, there is a little flexibility. There, there would still need to be a sidewalk, certainly. I think that in, in some places, if you had to go curb-tight and you eliminated the planter strip to protect an existing tree, that would be allowed by the code and that would be lifted at that, at that time. And I think that is all I had to add.
Yeah, I just, I just have one thing to add. Well, actually, two things. So I think we'd be open to working with Mike's department on reducing the sidewalk width from six feet to five feet if it can retain trees. And that, you know, almost decade adware tier, we've never went below five feet. I've never seen a four-foot sidewalk in Sandy in 10 years installed. You can propose it, but I, I'm just wanting to let you know that I highly doubt that it will be approved. And then the only other thing I want to comment is I wanted to reiterate that the proposal before you play with Trillium Machine is in the I-2 zone. And the proposal prior to this with Sandy Vault was in the I-1 zone. These zoning districts have very different design standards for a reason. The I-1 zone is much more visible within the City of Sandy. And it's, as Don pointed out earlier, it's basically a mirror image of the C-2 zone. So the uses are also more pedestrian-oriented than what is in I-2 zone where Trillium Machine is. So we've acknowledged in the past that the I-2 zone probably needs the most work for our design standards. And we've actually been working on them during the COVID-19 at my house. So I think some of the variances and deviations that Trillium is seeking tonight won't even be necessary in the future because our code will have changed. Unfortunately for them, the code is, is what it is tonight. And therefore, they had to request deviations and variances that hopefully a year from now won't be the case. So that's about all I had.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to applicant rebuttal. If you have any comments, Jeff, to wrap things up.
I do not unless Mr. Neal had something that he wanted to chit and specifically on those items, if that's okay.
Yes, can you, can you hear me? This is the first time I've spoken in the three hours here.
And you didn't get to start by giving us your name and your address.
Oh, okay, sorry. Neil Smith, I'm owner of Trillium Machine. The address here, where I'm sitting right now, is 36535 Industrial Way in Sandy. And yeah, just thank you for listening to, you know, our requests. And, you know, I've owned Trillium Machine for 23 years now. And I love it here and I try to be a positive, you know, citizen and employer of a lot of people here in Sandy. And, you know, this will help me in the future. And I think it would be a really positive factor for growth. And, and we do some really neat things here at Trillium with, you know, the kind of machining that we do. And I think we'll continue to be a positive force for Sandy and a positive member of Sandy Business Society. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to our discussion. Questions of staff? Anybody initially?
I had one quick question. It, it talked about the color, you know, being painted or not. The, the siding won't be painted. I mean, it'll come up wherever color you want it to be, correct? That's the app, again, question to the applicant, really.
The siding, I believe, from my understanding with what is being recommended from the City of Sandy, needs to fall within the color scheme of the palette that is available. If I am not wrong on that, I believe that's correct.
No, he's asking, is, are you gonna pick a color that is gonna come, it's metal, that's already, that's pre-painted, baked on as opposed to painting it once it's up?
But that would be the plan. If that's what we can do, then that is what, that is usually the easiest method we're doing, so.
Yeah, lasts a lot longer, too.
Definitely.
I have a question for Emily. Because as I was making notes, I wrote a note for myself about a curb-type sidewalk as well. And it sounded like in your comments that we wouldn't need to incorporate anything relative to that, that he would be able to work with staff, so you don't need our recommendation for a curb-type sidewalk or anything like that, correct?
I don't think so. Mike's comment, our Public Works Director's comments, or one of, one of his conditions is that the sidewalk alignment and/or planter strip width may be varied to preserve existing healthy trees in our adjacent to the right-of-way.
Okay.
So, I mean, when we have precedent in previous ones where we've gone with a curb type sidewalk to try and preserve trees. So.
Okay.
I mean, if it makes you comfortable, you could have a finding or a motion that we've done, we, this is how we typically do that, is that the, is that staff, and in this case would be the public work staff would work with the applicant to come up with a solution on that.
Kelly, I have a question for, or possibly for Emily, I'm not sure it's going to fall. But the roof pitch, we've talked about that before in terms of updating the I two and bring that down to a less of a slope. But mine's really going back to the 10%, looking down here, the, for change relief. I know the building sits back, we're trying to vegetate, put the vegetation in front of it. But even that 10% of trying to have something other than just a completely square building, I mean, that's the intent, right? As you go by, to give some, some aesthetics to it? So.
I guess it could be, yeah, it could be argued that way. The, the I two zone, though, also requires that you vegetate the property to be green, which is different from I one and C two. The other thing to keep in mind is that if you look at the I, you know, the I two zoning code has not been changed since I've worked here. But if you look at the code, it's very clear that it used to actually include other zoning districts. And I believe what happened is when we adopted the Sandy style code in 2008 or 2009, the 179130 for light and industrial was not modified. It probably should have been, but because it has, it has information that you guys have discussed before where it says, you know, says metal is not allowed as the primary exterior building material, except in the I two and I three zone. So I think the I one zone used to also be included in the section. Sandy style, when that was adopted, you know, 11, that changed that. But unfortunately, 179130 wasn't changed at the same time. So I guess to answer your question, yeah, that's the intention of the code, but I don't read other sections of this code. The buildings are not supposed to be visible from a public street. So I don't know, it's kind of conflicting, in my opinion.
I agree. Just, I just thought one thought, I'm looking at the elevations, page 53 of the staff report has all four elevations. Is that since it's a metal building, is, is possibly they, they might have a couple of parts of the building that were like a different color. I mean, it wouldn't, it just almost would be a no cost difference. I mean, you like tan, and then maybe if the roof was green, there'd be a section that would be green and then tan. So from the street, looking at it, you see two different colors. That gets you the same effect as a push pull because you're going to tell if it's pulled out two feet anyway. So I would just throw out a thought, if you were concerned about it, or if you wanted to look a little nicer on the south elevation, something like that might be something the applicant might consider.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ron, I was, I think what Kelly told us was that you're supposed to make the buildings look pretty and then hide them so we can't see them.
I think so.
Well, but yeah, keep in mind, we just went through that on the previous application, which is, you know, trees come and trees go. So if you use trees to decide if something's not visible from the street, well, what happens when they all blow down? So, yeah, I understand that. But I just thought I'd throw that out. Across my mind is just a no cost way, really, to provide a little personality to the south aspect.
And a third, a third of the building is sitting behind the other building as well. Again, I'm looking for, what we're trying to do here within this whole town is, you know, another set of the cities looking at the safety, the engineering side of it, we're more the aesthetics and just how to do those nice things with the vegetation, little changes to the buildings to make them look interesting. And, you know, we, that's where we don't want to have is have it look like a building that was 30 years ago, you know, exactly. So, I like Don's idea. But again, just a suggestion.
That's definitely something we could think about, I think.
Okay, before we go to a motion, I think we're pretty close. Somebody want to jump in and close the motion to close the public hearing at 10:35?
Before we do that, Jeffrey talked a bit about planter box. I'm a little confused on that. Maybe Kelly, you can share something. Is there, I'd say the sidewalk, or is there something else required there on that street frontage?
Yeah, I'll let Emily address that. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Or maybe Jeffrey can say something about, I mean, he talked about a planter box and he talked about another site that had the sidewalk but no planter box. So I'm just curious what the.
Or is that just the park strip?
I, well, from understanding, what it sounded like is half-street improvements, maybe I'm wrong, included a possible planner separating the curb from the sidewalk.
Okay, so if we go with the, we would go with the curb height sidewalk, that's academic.
Correct.
I got you.
Yeah, not so much a planter box, but a planter strip.
Yeah, it's just 10:30, got a little dense for a moment there.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Who was that second?
Logan.
John. Okay.
Commissioner Logan.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing at 10:36. We'll go for a roll call so we know.
Commissioner Carlton.
Yes.
Commissioner Salsky.
Yes.
Commissioner McLean-Wenzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Maithen.
Yes.
Chairman Carlton.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion? I didn't pick up a lot of comments or some things that would be discussion points, questions?
I would say just, there was one comment, just curious where we are on the four foot awnings. I'm getting, I'm looking at the elevations. There's two doors that open to the south. And my understanding is Emily, you want, you know, the regular four foot on those. Absolutely suggested that on the one on the, on the north side, which is for emergency, not have one. I understand that. I know it's a exit. I could see people just going out there and taking a lunch break or smoking, though. I, you know, on the north side, I'm sure that door will be used for just going in and out necessarily for other purposes. But it definitely is not going to be seen, that north door is not going to be seen at all because it fronts to all this vegetation there on Highway 26. But you were still saying we like the four foot awnings, right, Emily, on the south side?
Can we ask a clarifying question? Is that just their normal man door, or is that an emergency door only where it's alarmed?
You already.
Where it wouldn't be used for casual use?
Public hearing's closed right now, so we'll just have to leave it at that. And on the south side, there was only one man door, correct?
I see two on the drawing.
Thought there was a man door and an overhead, like a garage door.
That's what I saw.
There's, there's a big garage door, and just to the right of it, there is a door that goes into the office. But there is a door shown on the south elevation on page 53, that's on the very left side, if you like, or the very west side of the, of the south elevation.
When, when Emily talked, I thought she was pretty clear on it, is that if it's an emergency door, then we're not going to require the awning on it. So, our, our, our emergencies versus non, but the non emergencies will have awnings on them, is what I heard.
Whether there's one or 12.
Exactly.
Right. And the elevations are pretty simple, you know.
Commissioner Carlton, am I, am I right in assuming, so on page 53, the south elevation, it has two man doors and a garage door. And that's, that's facing the parking lot. The one man door is the, is going into the, the office throughput. The other one's on the edge of the building where the, the two building walkthrough is. On the north side, it's, that's the backup against the trees. And that's the emergency door that I heard him say was there. And that's the door that they're asking to not be covered because there's going to be emergency staircase just above it. Is that right?
Correct. Well, just an emergency exit, yeah.
Exit.
And there could be more than an emergency exit back in the corner. And if so, we don't need an awning.
Yeah, I mean, you kind of made a key point there that, you know, it appears there's a second story to this. And where the emergency exit is out of the second story, I don't see if I just look at the four drawings. But I guess that's a discussion between them and the fire department.
Right.
Yeah, for us here is, if it's a, if it's a usable door, it'll have an awning. Like Tommy said, it doesn't are one of them. I make the motion that we have approved 19 dash 017 design review, design review variance deviation slash tree as presented with the recommendations as per, as per staff recommendation.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve file 19 dash 017 Trillium Machine, based on the findings of facts in the staff report. We'll take a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Carlton.
Yes.
Commissioner Wosowski.
Yippee, yes.
Commissioner McLean-Wenzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Maithen.
Yes.
And Chairman Crosby.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your patience.
Just a point, just a point of clarification, you want to wait till, so Emily has to craft the final order, and then Chairman Crosby has to sign it. And then that's your official decision.
The date, yep.
Okay, well.
I, I just wanted to say one thing to Mr. Smiths. I wanted to thank you for, for trying to maintain as many trees as possible. We really appreciate that.
Oh, absolutely. I love them. They've been here since the building was built in 1985. So I look at them out of my office, they're beautiful. I'd hate to cut them down. So, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks.
Okay, Kelly or Emily, do you have anything for us or any questions of anybody for staff?
I just wanted to remind everybody, the next planning commission meeting will be Wednesday, May 27. We have several items for that night. And then the following meeting will be Tuesday, June 30. And then that's as far as we've scheduled out. I, I kind of want to take them July or August off. I'm, I'll just be very honest, with COVID-19, I've been working just as much. And with three kids at home, going anywhere and watching them as well, my wife, too. I'm, I'm going to need a break in the summer. So I'm planning to take several weeks off this summer. So I'm going to try to skip a planning commission meeting, or at least I will not be in attendance. So. I do, I do know.
Like summer, too.
Yeah. So I think we're going to at least try to skip at least one month in the summer. I do know Chairman that you asked that if we could add bookmarks to staff reports within the PDF file.
Oh, wow.
I have that from our last meeting from two months ago. We didn't do it with this, these staff reports tonight. But I have that noted and we'll try to do it for the next hearing.
Okay.
We were just very busy with trying to just even get these things up and going. So that's why we didn't really bookmark them and get them in that case. And then the only other thing I'd had is I, I would anticipate on May 27, doing this call by Zoom again, even if the governor has lifted some of the COVID-19 pandemic protocols, I would assume that there'll still be limitations on group size meetings. And just to have it so that it's more accessible to the public, I think at least the main meeting will be by Zoom again.
Well, it seemed to work okay tonight. We made it happen.
That's right. We weren't not hacked, so that's good.
Jury, I had, I had a couple of things.
Any other questions for staff?
I gotta go, so I'm gonna.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can adjourn.
I move we close the meeting.
Right.
I second it.
I second it.
It's been moved to and seconded to adjourn. We won't do a roll call vote. All in favor say aye or leave the room.
Aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
You have something, Don?
Um, well, yeah, but if everybody's bailing.
I'm here to listen.
Um, well, well, Ron left, but I was gonna, first thing, I noticed in the last few that we've had some comments related to the fire department and the kind, yes, because of Ron, you know, contacting the chief and, you know, because they never give us anything, right? So I just wanted to compliment Ron. I, I think that the fire department is now paying a little more attention. At least they're responding by saying, you ought to talk to us before you're done. So that was good. The other one, I mean, Todd has left. I wanted to say something in support of Todd. And I don't know if this is the time to do it or not. But I'm, you know, Todd is on the commission. He's been criticized both in the hearings on Bailey Meadows by the, well, the opponents, but also by the mayor. For those who have not listened, you might want to look at the May, the March 2 council meeting, particularly at the end, just for the public session. You know, and, you know, Todd's being vilified just because we have to sit in a room. And I think that's pretty ridiculous. He's on the team. Yeah, the team, I don't want to ask questions. So the same people that are vilifying Todd for where he wants to sit are also not criticizing his transportation study in any way, shape, form. In fact, they're using the transportation study. I've not questioned a thing of it. And so I just wanted to say, I, you know, Todd's got my support. You know, I know Todd has had to step down a few times. That's a separate issue. But when the mayor is specifically asking out of the clear blue, what's the process for removing people from the planning commission, when it isn't even on the agenda? There's some stuff like that that I, I think that I just wanted to share my support for Todd for being on the commission. And I did not see anything incorrect about what he's done. And, and in fact, his transportation study has been reviewed by two other people, you know. So what this personality thing is about criticizing him for where he happens to sit in the room, to me is, I might just want to speak out. I just don't think it's proper for what the opponents have said. I don't think it's proper for the mayor to say it, particularly in the council meeting, when he's still in the process of hearing the appeal.
Don, can I, can I give you a little feedback on that?
But don't, don't be angry with me. I, I watched the city council meeting and I agree with you 100% about, about the vilification of Mr. Mobley. And I think it's vile and incorrect. He's done an admirable job that I've been on, on the planning commission and I support him 150%. What I heard the mayor saying, though, was asking a question because he's new to his position or newer to it. And he just does not know what the procedural processes are. So what I thought he was doing was trying to educate himself and not make a determination about a situation. And he was doing it publicly so people would hear him ask it. But that was my perception. But I want to go on the record of, of saying, I, I agree with what you're saying, everything about, about Todd. He's an excellent commissioner and I support him 150%.
Okay, well, that's just, Gary, I just felt I needed to speak out.
No, I appreciate that. Yeah, any, any other comments? I had one, since we're down to four. Are we still in official session?
Yeah, we, we voted and closed out.
You're closed, but it's all public still.
Still recording.
Yeah. Well, the other, the only other thing is that I inquired from Kelly about the status of Bailey Meadows and is there some stuff still going on in May? So if you're if you're interested in knowing what's kind of happening there, I think Kelly can share with you in email, just the process that's in place.
Chairman, I was going to ask you a question about that, if it's okay. This is just more edification questions. In, in the last city council meeting, they talked about Bailey Meadows and they talked, they kept referencing a specific code in the, in the planning guide. And I felt that what they were stating was interpretation. It wasn't. It was the same thing that we did as a, as a council. And I was wondering if somebody at some point, it doesn't have to be tonight, can, even, even we can wait till after the vote's all done, explain to me what, what it is that I'm not understanding about what they're seeing when they read that section of the code versus what I feel and what I think the, what the commission felt when we casted our vote on that. And I know it was a sensitive public subject, so I don't want to get involved in that. I, I just, I felt that we asked all the right questions as a planning commission to come to our solution. And then I heard every single council member say something opposite of what we said. So I, I was just wondering where the disconnect was. And I ask for your guidance in that, when it, when it's over, I guess.
Yeah, I, I kind of had the same, the same questions in my mind as to what because anytime one of our decisions is appealed, and it has been rare, very rare. But anytime that it's happened, I think it's, it's the time, a pause for us to say, okay, what, just, just what you've just said, you know? Did we miss something? What didn't we see? What couldn't we done? And I've, I've wondered, and Kelly, you don't have to answer this now, but maybe sometime on a phone call or some. You know, did the city council have access to information and did they have the authority to make decisions that we didn't? And the one thing that, yeah, and I just wondered, you know, what, what was different between the two so that we can learn?
Right, that's, and I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just, like I said, we don't need the answer tonight. I just, I'm curious because I, I made, I made a decision on what I thought was what the book told me. And what I heard in that last council meeting was the book was telling them something different. So I didn't want to know where my perception was off and so that we, we stay aligned for the future because it helps for public. It helps relieve public pressures and it helps, you know, put a better spotlight on, on both councils, so.
Oh, that's a legitimate question. And, and sometime we'll, we'll, we'll sit down, chat with Kelly maybe.
Yeah, I think it would be premature to answer that yet.
Yep. Okay, well.
I haven't.
Already, we've already adjourned, so you guys are halfway home anyway.
I haven't answered for you, but I can't, I can't really share it with you yet.
Understand.
No problem. Thank you. All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you again, Emily. Great work tonight.
Thanks, Emily.
Emily, appreciate it. Bye bye.
Thanks, Kelly.
I'm going to end the meeting.